Good afternoon everybody, welcome to the special board of trustees meeting of the Almonte Union High School District. Today is Wednesday, January 22nd, it is now 5:06pm and I call this meeting to order. Dr. Zuniga if you'll take roll call.
Good evening everyone, member Ricardo Padilla?
Here.
Member Quee Nguyen?
Here.
Member Dr. Barita Galavies?
Present.
Member Dr. Luis Guzman?
Present.
Member Francisco Bionas?
Present.
All present.
Okay. All members are present and we have a full complement of the cabinet minus legal council who will not be joining us today at this time. Dr. Zuniga will you read us into a closed session?
Yes, thank you President Bionas, closed session. Items are the following. Item A, Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiation for EMU A. Item B, Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiation for EMU A Adult Education. And item C, Government Code Section 54957.6 Labor Negotiation for CSA Chapter 11.
Thank you Dr. Zuniga, at this time do we have any public comments for items on closed session?
There are no public comments this evening for the closed session items.
Thank you, at this time the board will recess into closed session and we will return at six o'clock or as close to six o'clock as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the members of the public. We welcome you to the regularly, sorry, to the special meeting of the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. Today is Wednesday, January twenty-second. We are reconvening out of closed session. It is now six oh two P M. Doctor Zuniga, if you'll please take the role.
Yes, thank you, Board President. We're gonna start off with member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Qui Wen.
Present.
Member Dr. Marita Galavies.
Present.
Member Dr. Luis Guzman.
Present.
Member Florentino Bionis.
Present.
And student member Andrea Pablo.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We take note that a full complement of the board is present, as well as the superintendent cabinet's. Legal counsel is not here with us tonight. Okay, at this time, we will move on to our flag salute. If everyone will please stand, those who are willing and able, and join me in the flag salute. Moving on to item B three, approval of the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda tonight?
To approve.
Moved by Ms. trustee Padilla, is her second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Galavies. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Moving on to item number four, public comments. We have one comment card tonight submitted by Mr. Brian Unger, teacher at a Royal High School. Mr. Unger, are you here? Come on up. Let me just read this really quick before you are given your opportunity to speak.
Okay.
The members of the public who wish to address the Board of Trustees on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees may do so during the public comment portion of the Board of Trustees' agenda. However, pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act Government Code, Section five four nine five zero at Secuing, the Board of Trustees, except under very specific emergency circumstances, will not be able to act on any matter discussed during the public comment portion of the agenda until such matter is properly placed on a future meeting agenda. The Board of Trustees may direct district staff to investigate and or schedule certain matters for consideration of a future board meeting. The Board of Trustees cannot respond to specific questions from the public. Mr. Unger, at this time, whenever you're ready, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Board members. I know most of you, some of you are new, so for those new Board members, hello.
Hello.
My name is Brian Unger. I'm a twenty-year veteran teacher in our district. I'm here tonight to advocate for a policy that would significantly enhance the learning experience and overall well-being of our students, banning the use of cell phones on campus during school hours. Cell phones have become ubiquitous in our society, and while they offer many benefits, their presence in the classroom often leads to significant distractions. Studies have shown that students who are exposed to frequent phone use during instructional time experience diminished attention spans, lower retention rates, and decreased academic performance. By banning cell phones on campus, we can create a focused, engaging learning environment where students are better equipped to absorb and apply the knowledge shared by their teachers. High school is a critical period for developing social and emotional skills, yet the overuse of cell phones isolates students and inhibits meaningful interactions. During lunch breaks and other free periods, I see students sitting alone staring at their screens rather than engaging in conversation with their peers. A cellphone ban would encourage face-to-face conversations, fostering stronger relationships and a greater sense of community within our schools. Additionally, reducing screen time has been linked to improve mental health, helping students manage stress and anxiety more effectively. Cyberbullying. Unfortunately, cell phones can also serve as a platform for harmful activities, including cyberbullying. By limiting access to phone during school hours, we can reduce the prevalence of such behavior and provide a safer environment for all students. Moreover, the ban would mitigate the risks associated with unsupervised internet access, such as exposure to inappropriate content or online predators. As a teacher, the constant presence of cell phones not only affects students but also poses challenges for us teachers. Managing disruptions caused by texting, gaming, or social media use during class time takes valuable time away from instruction and leads to tremendous frustration among educators. A school-wide ban would alleviate this burden, allowing us to focus fully on delivering high-quality lessons. To ensure the success of a cellphone ban, clear policies and practical measures must be put in place. As of February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, L A U S D students will not be allowed to use cell phones on campus during school hours. This means their smartphones will have to be turned off and stored away, and stored away. This policy will align with the Phones Free School Act, which Governor Newsom signed into law to require each school district to come up with a policy to limit or prohibit the use of cell phones. Emergency communication protocols can be established to address parental concerns, ensuring that parents can reach their children through the school office when necessary. In conclusion, banning cell phones on campus during school hours is a crucial step towards fostering an environment that prioritizes academic achievement, social connection, and student safety. I urge the Board to consider a proposal that schools in Los Angeles and around the country are already implementing to support our students and empower them to succeed both inside and outside the classroom. Thank you for your attention and time for this important matter. I'm confident that together, we could create a positive, productive educational experience for all. Is that all my time, or am I...
That is your time. Thank you, Mr. Unger.
Okay, just super, super quick, one thing I wanted to add. If we are concerned, as I know we are, about our students, this is one thing that would immediately have a tremendously positive impact on our students in every area of the school life. Absolutely one hundred percent, right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Unger. If there are no further public comments, we'll move on to communication from union representatives. Is there a representative from the Almani Union Educators Association? I don't believe we have a rep tonight. We do? Is somebody gonna come up and speak? Come on up.
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Terry Colvin. I'm an English teacher, also twenty-year veteran at a Royal High School. I'm also the site director for E M U E A at a Royal. Ann Bazell, the union president, asked me to speak in her absence this evening. And here are the issues that we wanted to bring up. Good evening, Board members, cabinet, staff, and community members. On behalf of E M U E A's president, Ann Bazell, we would like to say first that she hopes you and your loved ones are keeping safe with all the fires that continue raging right up to this very moment. Despite all our differences and heated discussion, we are family here at E M U H S D. And we should look at to each other, we should look out for each other. That said, may the journey towards rebuilding home and community be swift and unencumbered. This evening, E M U E A would like to remind the district of the goals that were outlined for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. With your new board, we hope that you envision improving labor management relationships at all levels of the school district, to foster a culture of respect and professionalism through genuine collaboration and transparency in communication and educational partners. In that regard, we would like to emphasize the importance of bargaining, not only in good faith, but with a sense of timeliness. We need to settle our salary demands now. We are still bargaining late in January for the school year, for this school year, when we should be looking toward the twenty-six, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Ideally, we should by next month at sunshine our bargaining issues for the coming year. We need to get back on track with the negotiation cycle delineated in our collective bargaining agreement. Despite declining enrollment, it's no secret that students, that the students we need to give extra support to, particularly our at-risk population. Our school education, our special education teachers, our counselors and psychologists are constantly struggling to meet ever-increasing needs of our students. The district has deadlines to make and compliance requirements to meet, yet the support of our educators needs to properly and efficiently solve our, serve our students. The need is often out of reach due to insufficient staffing and lack of communication from administrators. Case loads are untenable, emails go unanswered, and our staff feels overstretched and taken advantage of because there aren't enough hours in the day to deal with everything that comes up. Due to things like M T S S and S E L, classroom teachers have been asked to find, to field more of our students' emotional and behavioral needs while also adhering to instructional obligations. Yet with declining enrollment and the current staffing ratio, these extra expectations are difficult to implement and with larger classes, particularly since so many of our post-pandemic temporary staff have not yet been placed in permanent position. Our educators deserve better because our students deserve better. Our educators deserve more support because our students deserve more support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. Moving on to C S E A Chapter eleven, is there a representative here tonight? No rep? Okay, thank you. Moving right along to communication, sorry, to oral and written communication, I'll move on to board superintendent announcements. Doctor Zuniga.
Yes, just one written communication that was received, and this is addressed to myself, superintendent, and also our board members. And it's an invitation that I'd like to, I made copies for you. It's from one of the organizations that serves our community. And I think, Mr. Wen, you could help me with the pronunciation, and the organization is Twa Ton Tang. Believe that's accurate. I briefly read it to the public as well, dated January twenty-first, to superintendent Doctor Zuniga and board members. On behalf of Ton Tang Monastery, we are honored to invite you and the board members to our Lunar New Year celebration, which will take place on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven to two P M. At Ton Tang Monastery, three zero five zero Cogwell Road, El Monte, California, nine one seven three two. Lunar New Year is a special time for us to celebrate cultural traditions, foster community connections, and express gratitude for the support and collaboration of our friends and partners. Your presence would greatly enrich this celebration and further strengthen the ties between our communities. We sincerely hope you and the board members can join us for this joyful occasion. Please let us know if there are any special accommodations you or your team might need, and thank you for your consideration and support. We look forward to welcoming you to our temple and celebrating this meaningful event together. Respectfully, this is Dick Hui Ton from the Tong Tang Temple. And the contact number and address to the actual facility where the celebration will take place. So with Lunar New Year coming, hopefully, this is one of the events that the board can attend, which is next Wednesday as well. Okay. I also just wanted to just recap a couple of things that have been obviously on all of our minds. I know back in December, the board did pass a resolution supporting students and families there and by immigration enforcement in anticipation of the new federal government coming in, President Trump. But also, just one of the things that I want to update the board on is we are moving forward with providing informational sessions to our parents, to our community. Our parents, our principals are working alongside their staff to inform, support, provide any resources and materials, along with the County Office of Education and other resources, organizations, nonprofits that are out to support our families. Last week, when we met with our Super PAC, our student advisory, I'm sorry, our parent advisory council, superintendent's, parent advisory council, one of the parents did highlight that there was a need for support with regards to communication or when there's questions from the Mexican Embassy. If there's anybody that, in the past, I believe there may have been an office in this community area within the Almani community, and that no longer exists, so they would like for the support or the board support, including, you know, positioning themselves to write a letter to say if there's any way that the Mexican consulate, I'm sorry, would be able to have a office within our school settings or within the district or somewhere in the Sangiova Valley where they're local and they can go to when there's a need as well. So we will be writing a letter on behalf of, of the board, as well as the school district and our parent, to advocate for any type of support that we can get from just not only our community but other resources as well, like the Mexican consulate. And also, in light of the federation, obviously, the federal administration's action yesterday to overturn the sensitive locations policy, if you're familiar with the sensitive location policy established by President Biden, that would have prevent, or that would have prevented anyone, including I S, to go into our schools, go into our churches, any other environments that were written by the law, regardless of, you know, obviously, the student's immigration status. But now, with the overturn of the sensitive, the sensitive location policy, and I want to reassure our education, our committee, community, that the Almani High School District remains committed to ensuring that every student, regardless of their immigration status, has access to the safe, secure, and nurturing learning environments that the district provides every day to our students. The sensitive location policy obviously previously prevented, again, the Immigration and Customs I S agent from arresting immigrants in places such as our schools, as mentioned, also hospitals and churches. And then the change to the policy does not overrule the student's constitutional right to an education, and also does not overrule state constitutional protections. And again, it's important to reinforce that all students possess the right to a public education. education, independent of their immigration status, and our schools are mandated to ensure that no student is denied enrollment or faced with barriers to their educational opportunities based on their, or their family's immigration status. And our schools serve as safe havens for our students, not only our students, but also our families. And I want to reassure you again, that's imperative, that not only this board, but everyone engages every day, from our school administrators, from our staff, as well as our community support, that we stand united in this effort, in our unwavering commitment to the education and well-being of every student within the El Monte Union High School District. And we'll continue to move forward in making sure that communication is out and is evident that our district is a part of this. Thank you, Board President Briones.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Moving on to board communications, I'll start tonight with Trustee Nguyen. And just a reminder, if we could keep our communication to five minutes.
Okay. I just want to report it out that, you know, the last two weeks, I went to Rosemead City Council to present a recognition for the incoming, the installation of incoming new mayor, the Honorable Margaret Clark, and Vice Mayor Sandra Amanta, and the outgoing, the Honorable Stephen Lee. And I, when it came there, I just stressed that, you know, the essential partnership between the city and Rosemead High School, because it's, in Rosemead, you know, Rosemead High School is iconic high school, so whatever we need to partner together to make it become brighter, stronger, and better for, for the resident of Rosemead. And also, I and Mr. Briones and I went to Rosemead School District to, you know, to present the certificate recognition to the interim, the outgoing interim Dr. Jennifer Fang, and the outgoing Board President, Mr. John Quintanilla. And Mr. Briones presented to Dr. Jennifer Fang the certificate, and I presented to Mr. John Quintanilla. And, you know, he's, he's an outstanding Board President. Last year, he worked very hard. You know, he went to our board meeting to listen to what, you know, how we collaborate with Rio Hondo and Pasadena City College. And he also, you know, reached out to Rio Hondo and Pasadena, you know, for, you know, for assistance. He went out his way, you know, like I say, we share the data together, like, you know, the most recent data I shared when Dr. Zuniga released the fourth semester for two years, 2003, 2004, 2004, 2005, fourth semester, great distribution. So we look at the data, you can see, you know, even though, I reminded everybody that Rosemead School District is the best feeder school district, but there's still a lot of inequity, especially to, you know, to the Latino student, because most Latino student, most of them, 80, 90% over there, went to take I M one, the math one, the most basic math one, and they didn't do, I mean, they do relatively better, but still, you know, not to my expectations. So they, the board, they really want to bring equity, especially in math. And I told them, you know, if you don't have equity in math, you don't have equity in anywhere. You know, if you can achieve that, then that would be the great subject. So, you know, and, you know, and, you know, and our collaboration, you know, between a board member and board member, and superintendent and superintendent is very crucial for the staff. And in the meantime, you know, all of the data I already distributed, you know, through email to fellow board member of Mountain View School District, Rio Hondo College, and Pasadena City College, so they can see, and they're very welcome, and they never seen these data, you know, put in such a good order. Kudos to the education, I mean, to Dr. Laura Rivas from, from education service. And they, they really welcome, and I'm just a messenger to tell them, you know, here's the data, we need to sit down, work together, and also send a message to El Monte City School District also, and send to their fellow board member, and also Dr. Maribel Garcia. You know, we need, everybody had to get on board and work together. You know, we cannot do it alone. You know, of course, we have instructional problem in our school district, that's why we see the result doesn't move very much, doesn't make much improvement. So we did the two-pronged approach. We work with the feeder school district, and we work with, you know, to improve our instructional method over here, and collaborate with the junior college, you know, so that's very important. So that's all I want to report. And on this note, I know the SAT test coming back, I see last year, I see about a few hundred kids from our school taking SAT. I want to know the number from each school, student that take the SAT, and, and their ethnic groups, so we can monitor. And on the issue of immigration, last two days, a lot of people, especially Latino parents, feel very, you know, unnerved, and very, very scared, and they told me that, you know, they may have to take their kid out of school. So, you know, thank you, Dr. Zuniga and the board, in solidarity, we, you know, to support them. So can you keep a track who is absent, and if you can reach out to calm them down? And, you know, it's very much appreciated. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Trustee Nguyen. Move on to Trustee Padilla.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody, when I was board president, I talked about, you know, taking care of our mental health. Even now, as not being the board president, being a board member, I want to just reiterate that we must take care of ourselves. You know, the year is going by so fast, it's already, you know, the 22nd of January of 2025. I know, you know, I find myself still saying Happy New Year to some people that I haven't seen, or a meeting that I'm going to that, you know, it's the first meeting for this year, but we must continue to take care of ourselves with our mental health, find whatever it is that you need to do to calm you down, re-energize you, and then don't, if you need to go see your parents or you haven't seen them, you know, go and see them. Many of us that are educators, we're entering into our 50s, 51, 52s, and so some of us still have our parents, and the job consumes us, you know, being a principal, being a board member, running a nonprofit, and all the other things that you might be involved with. Make time for your loved ones, because at the end of the day, the district will keep moving forward, the classroom will still keep moving forward, but your family, you know, as much as I love the El Monte Union High School District, my family must come first, and that goes for you guys as well. Even as employees of this district, your families must come first. And I don't know if this happens to you, but there's times when I'm at home and I'm in bed and I'm like, oh my gosh, I should have made it out to my mothers, or I should have made it out to my fathers, and you have that guilt inside. Go and see your parents, have dinner with them, go and, and do those things so that, you know, if something does happen, you're not, I could have, would have, should have. And the beginning of the school year for me started with the bang, I ended up being in the hospital with my father on New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and the second, and the third, and the fourth, and it just threw it back in my face, like, I must find time. So my message to you is please find time to go do those things, don't put off your doctor's appointments. I get it, even if you're a teacher and an educator, I've been an educator for 32 years, go to the doctor, who cares if you miss a day? And I'm the child welfare and attendance person telling you that. If you're not well, and your family's not well, our kids are not going to be well. Take care of your mental health. On the issue of immigration, absolutely, our kids are distraught right now as their parents, you know, 32 years in the El Monte City School District, I hear it from my moms all, every day. And even though Dr. Zuniga is saying, you know, that they cannot come into the schools and into the churches, I watched the news and I heard that the incoming president say, yep, you can arrest people in the schools, and you can arrest people, you know, in the, in the churches, and that was like, you know? So I'm glad that our schools took a proactive approach, I'm glad that if they go into our high schools, that our high schools can teach our undocumented parents how to fill out the safety plan. Like, what is a safety plan? If my dad's a construction worker and my mom is a lady who cleans houses in Beverly Hills, and my mom gets picked up, and my mom is the one that was supposed to pick me up at school and she doesn't show up, the school needs to have something in place that says, if, you know, Ms. Juana Padilla didn't come to pick up undocumented Ricardo Padilla or my father, the school needs to have a plan laid out that says, you can release this child to so-and-so. And I know that in the olden days, we had like the emergency card, I'm not talking about the emergency card, I'm talking about a written-out safety plan where we put, this is who I want taking my child, who will have educational rights, health rights, and so on and so forth. Why do I say that? Because if somebody's undocumented parent gets picked up by ICE, they're going to start getting processed in some detention center, and what happens to the child? We have to call DCFS or somebody to come pick them up. I don't want that to happen to our kids. So also, one of the things that our families need to know is that whoever you put on your safety plan must be a documented person, because if I'm undocumented, my mom's undocumented, and she allows for, you know, Maria to pick me up, and Maria's undocumented, and then Maria gets picked up, then what happens to my safety plan? That I'm in the same boat again? So we need to have those conversations, and I know that sometimes our undocumented population doesn't want to reveal that, but they got to find that person who they trust at school. You can't go telling everybody that you're undocumented, but every student has like a teacher that they can confide in, that they trust, that they build a positive, caring, nurturing relationship, and they should open up to that teacher so that that teacher can then direct them to a counselor, to an assistant principal, to a principal who will guide them. One of the sources that I use is the I L R C, it's the Immigration Learning Resource, I don't remember the exact name of it, but it's called the I L R C. They're like my go-to when I need a resource, even if it includes the little red immigration card. You know, those of us who are people that are undocumented know what the little red card is. It tells you what your legal rights are, what ICE can do, what ICE cannot do. If they come to your house, they must have an order that's stamped by a judge, usually they don't come with that, they just come with their little ICE paperwork that has no power in the court. So the more the teachers talk about this, and counselors and principals, the more informed we will be on this topic so that we can put our families a little bit of ease of, what can you do? How can you be proactive? And filling out a document and hands-on and putting all that stuff and thinking about it is a way to bring down your anxiety level, to know, if I'm a construction worker, if I'm cleaning a house in Beverly Hills, okay, I have something in place, there is a plan there for my child if that happens to me. It is a democracy, that is who the people elected, so we have to go with it, but people should also know their rights.
If we could wrap up our comments.
Lastly, I will wrap it up, just a minute, Mr. President. The last thing is, this district has always been very vocal about D E I, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We pride ourselves in being a district that has a lot of minorities. You know, you look at this board, we're Latinos, except for Dr. Lynn, who's Asian, and Mr. Nguyen, okay? Some people don't talk about race, it's taboo, we don't, we talk about it. We are very conscientious of the programs that we have, we must have diversity, and I would like to ask this board that it would be a good token of respect and mutual collaboration if we were to present a certificate to the Vietnamese Buddhist congregation in El Monte, and send our Asian representatives so they could see that the Vietnamese community has a seat at the table here, the Asian community has a seat at the table here, the Latino community has a seat at the table, our white students here, even though it's 1%, we represent all students. But I would like to ask that President Briones, if we could send a certificate, or ask my colleagues to you and Mr. Hui, if your schedule allows to present them a certificate, and let them know that we value our Asian, and it's called the Lunar New Year. I got to tell you, a couple of years back, I got, I got checked by a teacher, I did loud, the loudspeaker announcements at my elementary school, and they're like, Mr. Padilla, it is not called the Chinese New Year, correct yourself. And I didn't know, so I'm glad somebody checked me and said, it is called the Lunar New Year. So don't call it the Chinese New Year, it is offensive, and I asked why? And they basically said, because China wants to own everything, and there's other countries that celebrate this, and I'm not from China. And I was like, okay, so I call it the Lunar New Year. So can we have a certificate if the board allows to present that, Mr. Briones?
We'll bring it up during roundtable, thank you. Does that conclude your communication?
Yes, that concludes my communication, Mr. Briones.
Thank you. Moving on to Trustee Galvez.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I'm trying to get used to this microphone. I wanted to start off with kudos to the teachers' union coming together with Mrs. Torres to reach an agreement where putting like the, I want to get this right, the Fire Relief Bank M O U is in place, I felt like that was a very progressive move. I understand that it happened after the fact, but just the fact that the district kind of like worked together pretty quickly with one of our unions to put this in place, I think that's awesome, so kudos to everyone who was a part of that. Secondly, I want to say that I'm really excited for open house kickoffs, I know that Mountain View starts tomorrow night, so I'm looking forward to visiting all the different sites and getting to see what's happening at all our schools. And lastly, I want to send my condolences to the family of Mr. Eric Lopez, he was my teacher when I was a student at a Royal High School. I work at a neighboring school district, and last year, when I first became a school site administrator, I was at an event, and Mr. Lopez was there, and he was kind and welcoming, and a lot of times, we don't talk about how leadership is really lonely. Leadership is hard, you're put in difficult situations, a lot of times, you are working with students and parents, you're confronted with situations that you don't expect to be confronted with when you leave your house in the morning. So when you meet a fellow administrator that is welcoming and warm and inviting, it's really beautiful. And last year, when I first became an administrator, he was very welcoming, very warm, offered his email right away, said to give him a call if we needed any support at our site. We were a whole brand-new administrative team at my site, so for one of our neighboring schools, administrators to just welcome us wholeheartedly, that was very kind. So I just want to send my deepest condolences to his family and to the staff at his school and his students, I can't imagine what they are going through right now, to lose their school site administrator.
What school was this, what school was this? I know you're talking about, but?
Fulham Park High School.
Oh.
Yeah, so, he was the administrator at that site, and so, yes, I just wanted to send my condolences, that's all.
Thank you, Trustee Galvez. Trustee Guzman.
Nothing to report today.
Okay, and so I'll move on to myself, so I just have a few items to, to share. First, I attended the January 14th Super PAC meeting, I want to say thank you to Edith Chaveria and her staff for presenting on the California School Dashboard, and to Dr. Zuniga for facilitating the conversation with our parents that evening, and thank you to Mr. Nguyen, Trustee Nguyen, for attending the meeting as well. Next up, on January 16th, I had the pleasure of attending the Rosemead School District Board of Education meeting with Trustee Nguyen. As he shared, we presented certificates to their outgoing board president, Mr. John Quintanilla, as well as their assistant superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Fang, who was acting or interim superintendent until the board approved Dr. Diego Sino as the new superintendent. I wanted to extend an invitation, I did receive a communication from Los Angeles County School Trustees Administration, I wanted to extend an invitation to my colleagues on the board and Dr. Zuniga and staff. Tomorrow, they will be hosting a meeting at 4:00 p.m. with Senator Lena Gonzalez and the California Department of Education, and some of their staff to discuss Senate Bill 48, the Safe Schools Act. This is a bill that would put into place prohibitions on police assisting federal immigration authorities with any immigration enforcement in schools, and would prohibit the entering of any immigration officials onto school property without a judicial warrant. If anyone is interested in attending this meeting, please let me know, I can provide you the registration link, and again, it's tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., it is on Zoom. I did want to encourage everyone to please register for the annual Los Angeles Homeless Count, which was supposed to take place this week, however, due to the LA fires that took place earlier this month, the homeless count has now been moved to February 18th through the 20th. And for those of you who are interested who live here in the San Gabriel Valley, or would like to volunteer here in our own communities of El Monte, South El Monte, or Rosemead, the point-in-time count will take place on February 19, 2025. You can register online with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority website, whose URL I don't have off the top of my head right now, but you can look up the homeless count, 2025 homeless count, and register there. Next, I want to extend an invitation to my colleagues, we received communication from Congressman Gilbert Cisneros's office, that he would like to, well, one staff reached out to introduce themselves, Congressman Cisneros is our newly-elected congressman for the San Gabriel Valley, for the 31st Congressional District, and I did extend an invitation to his staff, and they did indicate that the member would like to visit, and we have a tentative visitation date for January 17th. And we have a tentative visitation date for January 28th at 10:00 AM. Dr. Zuniga and I briefly spoke about this, so I'll follow up with you after the meeting. But I'd like to extend an invitation to my colleagues if you would like to attend the meeting greet with the congressman, potentially a site visit as well. And again, details will be hashed out with Dr. Zuniga. And lastly, I did want to share my own thoughts about the Trump administration and their immigration enforcement and what's going on in the last, feels like forever, and it's only been three days. I do want to make it clear that the Almani Union High School District, our board of trustees and our staff and our faculty is 100% in support of our students. Whether you are undocumented or not, if you are a citizen, a resident, legal or otherwise, you are entitled to an education here in California. You are entitled to the protections afforded to you by the state constitution and the Constitution of the United States. All of us took an oath to uphold those constitutions. We did not take an oath to an individual, to a person, to a president, to a party, to an ideology. We took an oath to uphold the constitution. The constitution affords us due process and other protections. Despite comments or rhetoric from the Trump administration and its officials, an executive order does not wipe out the constitution. So we are here to support you. Our existence, my existence as a child of immigrant parents, as a queer individual, my existence is my resistance, and I will be here to support you. With that, we'll move on to our student board member communication. Trustee Pablo.
So these fires, our student advisory meeting did get canceled and has been moved to next week, January 27th, correct? That's all I have.
Thank you. It's a quick meeting today. All right, moving right along to information presentation.
Before we go on, are we going to answer the question of like, who's going to go represent us at the homeless count? Who's going to represent us at Laxta? Particularly because it's an immigration topic. Will you go as our president to represent us? And then who, are we going to decide that or who's going to go?
Those are open invitations.
So you're not going to go as our representative?
That's not what I said. Those are open invitations. If you would like to register for the homeless count, you can register, and I'll provide the link to folks.
And just a question about that. I mean, I think the homeless count is a joke. I mean, I don't need to take account. And I say this because every year, we sign up for that. Every year, we get the count, it increases. But what does that do? You know, I know that it's for funding, and then we get the funding. But it's like, the homeless count thing, it doesn't take a rocket scientist or mathematician. It's getting worse. So what does that do? Does it bring us funding to El Monte, to the county? What does that do? I know you're involved with that, but I don't know anything about it.
So I'm going to reserve those comments to roundtables. We can have a more thorough discussion. Just to reiterate, the invitation to register as a volunteer to the homeless count is open to everyone. I'm not representing the district by any means as a sole individual. And then for the meeting with Senator Gonzalez tomorrow, it's also an open invitation to anybody. If you are interested, please reach out, and I'll provide you the registration link because it's not an open meeting to everyone, specific to trustees.
So will we be discussing that in roundtable again? Because I mean, you are the president, so if your schedule allows, it would be nice if you could be our spokesperson for our entire school district. You want to bring that back up in roundtable?
I will be attending the meeting, but it's open to anybody.
But that's what I wanted to know. Like, if you go, I feel good that we have a representative. I just don't want none of us to go. If you're going, I feel very confident that you'll bring back the information because this is critical information. So you answered that question. And then for the Gil Cisneros, you know, we all work and stuff. Is that the time that they gave us or is that the time that we suggested? Could we go back and say, "Hey, can you do it a little later in the day? We're all at work."
We offered them some times. That is the time that they selected.
They selected?
Yes.
Okay, I just say that because, you know, we're all working except for Mr. Qui, who has the luxury of being retired. But the rest of us have a job. You know, at 10 o'clock, it's like, I'm at a school site. So it's just, you know, that's what I wanted to clear up.
Yeah, and if we have any further questions, we can discuss during roundtable.
Yeah.
Thank you. So moving on to information presentation. Item number one, recognition of Almani High School student selected to, for participation in the All-State Honor Choir. And that is Alexander Gonzalez from Almani High School. Dr. Zuniga.
Okay, I think he is here. I started him now. You want to come up, Alexander?
Oh, yeah.
All right. We are very excited to have Alexander here. This is not the first time that the board has met Alexander. He has performed for Star Spangled Banner at many events, including when we had the groundbreaking, I believe, at Almani High School, if I'm not mistaken. He also has done our Caballeros introduction as far as the welcoming with the Star Spangled Banner too. And last time I saw Alexander, we were in this very room at our annual District Office Christmas Holiday Luncheon. And it was exciting to see him and the rest of acapella, Mr. Whistler, our amazing choir teacher at Almani High School, my former neighbor at Almani High School, and the classrooms there too. So we wanted to honor Alexander because this is one of the first times, I believe, in district history, that is the first, that one of our students from our district, from Almani High School, has made the State All-State Honor Choir. And what an accomplishment. A round of applause for that. And Alexander just returned from Sacramento. I believe the performance was this Saturday, January 18th. We were excited to hear just a little bit about what happened. How did you feel? How did you feel representing the entire community, Almani High School, also in our district too? But I also just want to give some background about how difficult it is to also to make this, right? So the All-State Honor Choir brings together the finest high school singers from the entire state of California to sing at the California All-State Music Education Conference, which was just attended in January on Saturday. The All-State Choir Concerts was held in Sacramento, and he performed at Sacramento Memorial Auditorium on Saturday. And the first known district student, as mentioned, to make the State Honor Choir as well. I have Mr. Whistler, choir teacher here, and also our principal, Mr. Eddie Cuevas. And I know I've asked Mr. Cuevas to like to share a few words because I know the external side from seeing performances. I don't see him every day, but I can only imagine the impact he has had at Almani High School. Because you're a senior now, right? Okay, so just four years there. And just as a lion to a lion too, you know, very proud of you as well. And also, I know that the folks in front of you who are supporting side by side also are extremely proud of what you accomplished this past Saturday too. Congratulations. I'm going to hand it over to our folks here too to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. As Dr. Zuniga said, my name's Eddie Cuevas, and I have the privilege and honor of being the principal at Almani High School. When we welcome our eighth graders, we always welcome them with, "You're going to find your roar at Almani High School." And we want to make sure that they find the programs that they're interested and help them develop. And this is how Alexander has found his roar at Almani High School. Dr. Zuniga has already talked about his rendition of the National Anthem. I think it's only second to the Whitney Houston rendition of the National Anthem. But again, he's been part of acapella for four years, men's choir for two years. He has been in orchestra for one year. He has been the GSA Vice President and now President of GSA at Almani High School. He's also been a link crew leader for two years. And he's also been behind the scenes in that infamous haunted house that we host every Halloween. Last but not least, he's a great leader, and he's loved by everyone on campus, as evidenced at our send-off when he went off to the All-State Choir. But with that, I want to hand it over to Mr. Whistler, who can speak more about his talents.
Hi, good evening. My name's Joel Whistler. I'm the choir director at Almani High School. And it's just such an honor to celebrate with Alex. I was very fortunate to be able to be there and watch him in Sacramento and watch the performance. And I just remember Alex very well, coming in as a freshman. It was the first semester after the pandemic after we came back. And he was very, hard to believe, but he was shy, and he was quiet, and he kind of just kept to himself. And I didn't even realize all the talent that he had inside of him. And as time went on, he got more confident. And he's just been a tremendous leader and a tremendous model. And there's no getting around people that have just natural ability to do something. So he comes with a lot of natural ability, but he's worked on it, and he's progressed to the point where he would be selected for something like an All-State Honor Choir. So I and the choir members and really our whole school were just extremely proud of him. And we wish him all the best. We're going to miss him when he leaves in a few months.
Thank you. At this time, if my colleagues would join me on the floor to recognize Mr. Gonzalez and share a few remarks of our own. So before we share our own remarks, I'm going to offer you the opportunity to speak. Perhaps if you want to sing a few words maybe? Not to put you on the spot. But I'll give you the opportunity before we share our remarks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex. So going into high school freshman year, I was scared and worried that by the end of my senior year, I wouldn't have a clue about my future. After being accepted in the Acapella Choir my freshman year, the road ahead seemed less foggy. Now, coming back from the All-State Honor Choir and being officially categorized as one of California's best vocalists, it's starting to feel surreal. I'd like to thank my parents for giving me everything I've ever needed in my lifetime, both material and emotionally. My principal, Mr. Eddie Cuevas, for always encouraging us as students and as people to be a role model in the community. But most of all, I would like to thank my choir teacher, Mr. Joel Whistler, for introducing me to the world of music. I've been one of Mr. Whistler's students for four years now, and he has shown us students nothing but love and a sense of admiration. I thank you all here at the district for putting your students first. Thank you.
So I'm going to offer my colleagues an opportunity to say a few words. Colleagues, if you would please limit your comments to a minute so that we can move on to our other recognition.
You have such a gifted voice. I had the opportunity to enjoy it. I enjoy it so much. And, you know, it's out of the world. You know, I really, really admire your voice. It's beautiful, you know, like in the Caballeros and over here. I mean, it's speechless. Congratulations for your recognition. And thank you very much, you know, for your service throughout our community. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Alexander. It all starts with leadership. You know, Mr. Whistler does some amazing things with our students. I remember first seeing Alexander at an open house. And the minute I saw him, he just stood out from the rest of the students. And I told Mr. Cuevas, "Hey, I want that young man to sing the Star Spangled Banner at Caballeros. Do you think you could get him?" And we did that, and he had the opportunity to do that at our leadership seminar. So congratulations to you. History is always being made at El Monte High School, you know? We have the first young man here who made the All-State Choir team. And we also have the first Latino principal in the history of El Monte High School for 123 years. This is the first Latino principal we've ever had. And for, you know, the whole time in Almani Union High School District, you made history by being the first person to represent us in this amazing choir. It is tough to make it into that. And so that just speaks to the level of your expertise and the music that you can perform and all of that. So kudos to you and to your family. Okay, well deserved.
So I will keep it really short. I'm an Almani alumni as well, Almani Lion. So this makes me really proud to see, you know, history being made, like Trustee Padilla said. But I think to Alexander not giving up, to developing that talent that Mr. Whistler saw in you, and all the hard work you put into it. And more than anything, I think a lot of praise should go to the parents who always encourage you to continue that dream. And so this is a fruit of their work and their effort and your perseverance. And I know you're going to do great things. So when you do, don't forget about us. And hopefully, come back next year and let us know how things are going. Thank you.
Congratulations, Alexander. I was able to meet you in this room about a month ago. And you have an amazing voice. But the other thing that I want to recognize tonight is your energy. You have this beautiful energy that filled the room that evening when I met you a month ago. And I hope you take that with you, with whatever you do next in your career. And I look forward to like following you. And I hope you come back and visit, and you inspire other students to be as successful as you were at Almani High School.
So I'm going to start off by saying this. I am incredibly jealous of you. Most of us are multi-talented. I am not one of those people. I have a couple of talents, and that's pretty much it. One of the things that I've always wanted to be able to do in life is to be able to sing. Now, I do go out and do karaoke every so often, but that's not really singing. And let me tell you, as Trustee Galavies just said, you have this energy, you have this presence. And I recall when you sang the National Anthem at the groundbreaking in October, just how you radiated that energy, how you stood out. So I'm incredibly proud of you, as are all of us here tonight. Thank you to your parents. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to the administration for the support. Congratulations on this beautiful recognition tonight. Wherever you go, are you going on to higher ed? Where are you attending or planning on attending? Go Lancers, go Titans. Wherever you go, I always tell this to our students, wherever you go, wherever you end up, always remember, you started off here in El Monte. And as we always say here at Almani Union, inspire greatness. Thank you. So I'm going to present the certificate of recognition. Oh, Ms. Pablo, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, it's okay. Hi, I think I know you. I don't know if you recognize me. Oh, my, sorry. But I've always enjoyed going to the winter performance at Almani High School. Since my best friend goes there, I go support her. And I think until like last year, I started seeing you sing. And it's really impressive. I went with my friend this year, and we were left flabbergasted. Honestly, we were like, oh, he did well. He ate, you know? Congratulations. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Pablo. And I was reminded, if I could please share a few words to your parents. Gracias a sus papás por estar aquí hoy para apoyar a Alexander. Deben de tener, deben de ser muy orgullosos de todos sus logros. Es por ustedes que nuestros estudiantes son tan exitosos. So gracias a ustedes por compartirlo con nosotros. So at this time, I will present the certificate of recognition to Alexander Gonzalez for your exceptional talent, dedication, and hard work, which has earned you the distinguished honor of being selected to participate in the California All-Star Honor Choir. Your commitment to excellence in music and your ability to inspire others through your artistry are truly remarkable. Congratulations from the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees. And as always, we do have this beautiful lapel pin for you to wear with pride. Congratulations again. Parents, you want to come up? Mama, papá, si quieren venir para acá. And we will take some photos with everyone. So let's do one without the board first, and then we'll jump in. Another round of applause for Alexander. Another round of applause for Alexander. Another round of applause for Alexander. All right, moving right along. Item number two under information presentation, we have a recognition of our student participants in the 2025 Tournament of Roses Parade. Dr. Zuniga.
Yes, thank you, Board President Breones. How many of you saw the Rose Parade?
I was there in person.
How many guys slept in, didn't see the Rose Parade? I see you kids. If you saw the Rose Parade, you may have seen these next two students that performed on the first of, what, January 1st, 2025, a new year. I was so excited to try to take a peek about whether we could see the students perform. I knew which band they belonged to when I was doing my research about what we're talking about tonight. I also looked at, well, how do they, you know, how do they get selected? We have world-renowned band programs that come from, not only from this community, but California, the world, the United States of America, from everywhere. So it's a selective process that this, probably the greatest show, you know, that has existed for many, many years, as the Rose Parade is famous for throughout the world, not only in the U.S. And having two of our students to march down Colorado Boulevard and be part of that exciting moment that the whole world is watching that morning too. I'm just very excited to announce that we do have two students from our district that participated in the Rose Parade, and the way they made that path was through the Pasadena City College Tournament of Roses Honor Band. And though it is the Pasadena City College Band, they do have a selection of students that try out, that have to, you know, go through the process, just like we saw with Alexander, to make this prestigious band, and also to understand that out of many students, I think 500 high school music students auditioned for the 2025 spots in the band. So that's quite a large number that we do have for those kids, and also claiming that they are the official band of the Tournament of Roses, as we all know that too. And also, again, it comprises PCC Lancer Marching Band with a selection of high school students from throughout Southern California. And we have, number one, and this is no particular order, I just go by the school order, I want to first welcome Aaron Rodriguez, who's a senior at Mountain View High School. Aaron, are you here? Come on up here. Come on up. And if we could have our principal, Mr. Jose Banyas, come up here. I believe also our band director, Mr. Farachi, is here. If you'd like to join our student, Aaron, who is a senior again at Mountain View High School. And just watching two of our young men participate in this event again, for us, it's just really a rewarding moment for all. I'd like to hand it over now to our principal, Mr. Banyas, who has a few words again about the insight about how Aaron has impacted not only our community, being there, representing the district, representing his school at Mountain View High School, but also what happens with Aaron every day on campus, and what we celebrate about Aaron this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Again, my name is Mr. Banyas, principal at Mountain View High School. At Mountain View, we wholeheartedly embrace our motto of inspiring greatness. It's a principle that we strive to embody every day at the View. Inspiring greatness extends beyond mere expectations. It is a commitment we encourage all staff to share with students, fostering an environment where students feel empowered to inspire their peers as well. Aaron's participation in the annual Rose Parade is a remarkable testament to the spirit of inspiring greatness, resonating not only with his peers, but with the entire Mountain View High School community. Despite the challenges faced by the band program, Aaron had consistently exemplified excellence and dedication, proudly representing Mountain View High School at this prestigious Pasadena Rose Parade. Your achievement serves as an inspiration to us all, showcasing the power of resilience and the teamwork in the pursuit of greatness. Congratulations, we are truly proud of what you have accomplished. Congratulations, and thank you. Mr. Farachi, may I have something to add?
Good evening, everyone. My name is James Farachi, and I am the proud director of instrumental music at Mountain View High School. Aaron represents the very best that our school has to offer. Teaching music, the subject matter, is simply the medium by which we grow young men and women of exceptional integrity, and that is something that I am so absolutely proud of because Aaron absolutely represents all of the ideals that we so long to strive for in our music programs and in all of our programs as a school site and as a district. Aaron is exceptionally talented. He applies himself every single day, and he has set the example for every single one of his peers to follow. And I could not be more proud of Aaron and everything that he has done and everything that he will continue to be. And I'm very, very sad to lose him in a couple of months, but I am so excited to see him spread his wings and fly and soar like an eagle above all the mountains and above all the challenges that we inevitably all face in life. But I know that he is going to go out there and do exceptional things because right now he is doing exceptional things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'd also like to bring forth Aiden Gonzalez from South Almani High School. Aiden, if you're here, if you can make your way up here. I'd also like to welcome our South Almani High School principal, Dr. Jorge Morales, who has joined Aiden this evening. One of the highlights that I noticed about Aiden, who, by the way, is only a sophomore, so he still has another two and a half years at South Almani High School with his talent. I was looking at some of the highlights of Aiden, and I understand that he was a member of the Elite Herald Trumpets, right, Aiden? And I say this because I learned about this exclusive group, about what it does and, you know, what it took for you to be part of that as well. And it's known for the ceremonial fanfare for the Rose Queen and the court. They actually showcase top-tier talent from across the region as well. So really another kudos to you for not only being part of that, but even making the Herald Trumpets. It's amazing and talented. As a sophomore, I'm impressed. So congratulations on this recognition as well. I know that both of you represented the district extremely, extremely well, and you're showcasing your Honor Band attire, which is really cool, and I'm jealous, I wish I had one of those too. But you know what? I am, I could only say that this doesn't happen every year. We don't see this every year too, so you should be extremely proud of, both of you should be extremely proud of representing your community as well. I want to hand it over to Dr. Morales again to highlight a little bit about Aiden and what he does every day, part of South Almani High School too. Dr. Morales?
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jorge Morales. I'm the proud principal of South El Monte High School, and today it is, of course, with great pleasure that I celebrate Aiden, not just as a student at South Almani High School, but this very important recognition of his participation with the Rose, Tournament of Roses. And Aiden, more importantly too, was part of the Herald Trumpets, as was identified by Dr. Zuniga, and that is a very elite, distinguished, front-of-the-line everybody hearing them come, starting off the tournament, and I'm sure getting to meet, of course, the Rose Parade float that was right behind you, all those, the court girls, right? So, but again, for us, it's really an honor, Aiden. You're sharing your passion for music. At South Almani High School, our mission is every student a success story, and this is, of course, a clear example of how Aiden's talents are being celebrated. But of course, he still goes back to school, attends every class, he interacts with his classmates, and as a sophomore, we're only looking for better things to come from him, as he has already received a very important recognition. And before you guys get to hear from him, Aiden, the last week of finals approached me during nutrition break or lunch, and he had his nice bright jacket, and I was like, damn, kid, they treat you well! But he was really proud, of course, sharing it with his school and with his classmates. So, Aiden, we enjoyed watching the parade. I've enjoyed the social media celebration of other supporters that are helping you out, and those pictures looked awesome and so elegant. And again, be proud of what you do, okay? Congratulations. Onward!
And now we'll have the board step down if you could join us.
So yeah, at this time, if my colleagues would join me on the floor to recognize our amazing students.
Much of our group, but Aiden also shared that one of his positive experiences was getting to meet all the other musicians from all the other bands from around the world, and Morales having one in and out. After the parade, he got a chance to interact with the band unit that came from Japan, right? So Aiden again was able to celebrate and experience the kids from across the world, so.
So at this time, I'm going to offer the opportunity to Aaron Rodriguez to share a few words, and then we'll allow Aiden to share a few words as well before we move on to the board.
I admit, I don't exactly know what to say, but I'd like to thank my family for their constant support, my father for driving me to PCC, to and from the college many times, many days in a row sometimes. I want to thank my teachers, Mr. Farachi and Mrs. Ludwig, for continually supporting me as well. Without them, I couldn't have made it into the parade at all. Mr. Farachi signed a document. If he didn't, I wouldn't have been able to make it in.
Thank you. So at this time, Aaron, if you'd like to share a few remarks?
I just want to, oh, that worries. I want to thank my mom, my brother especially, my mom always driving me, waking up like I ain't in the morning, drive me for my 9:00 a.m. rehearsals. Tony for being there, taking pictures. Seriously, the whole parade, marching down those five and a half miles was such a great experience, I can't express. And I couldn't be happier to have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be able to meet new people, do something I thought I could never do before, and just have this whole new experience. I'm just so happy I was able to have it all, and I could have been grateful for everyone who was there to support me and along with me the whole way. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron and Aiden. At this time, I'll invite Trustee Pablo to share a few remarks.
Hi. First of all, congratulations to you both. I also played a brass instrument in middle school. I was never that good at it. I played baritone, it was terrible. My parents wouldn't let me play at home. But, I mean, you guys must be amazing if you guys are up there, so congratulations. I know that playing an instrument's really hard, especially if you're like marching. That's even more hard, and then five miles, that's crazy. Wow, congratulations.
And again, colleagues, if we can keep our remarks to one minute. Mr. Padilla, go ahead.
I just want to thank, like, the leadership, you know, all of the music teachers, the directors, Mr. Farachi, and all of the people that helped in these young men getting to where they're at right now, and also to the parents, you know, the parents are the children's first teachers, and it does take a lot of work to drive them and to, this is just like a sport, you know, to practice, and there's a big commitment there. And I just want to tell you both that I am so proud of you. To be able to perform at that level, that is like the world stage. It's not just like a neighboring school district or the county. This is at the world stage. So you guys, I've always said this on the board, you are the number one customer in the school district, and when I see that you guys perform at that level, I know that the sky's the limits for all of our students. If you have the right leadership, you guys can accomplish anything you want, you know, even becoming, you know, president of the United States, you name it, you know? I know I always say the sky's the limits, but Mr. Quiwin always corrects me, says, it's not the sky's the limit, you always tell me that it's the star is the limit, because that's like higher and stuff. So you guys, you're phenomenal. You make me very proud, so I can just imagine how your music teachers, your principals, and your parents feel about you, you know? Keep working so hard, and I know, Aiden, you're just a sophomore, you know, that is pretty amazing, so I wish you nothing but the best. You know, go Eagles and go Vikings, right? And that's coming from a Panther soul. Right on, guys.
You must have possessed a very special talent. Rose Parade is the most wild parade in the whole world. It's not, you know, like the United States, over the world, and we are so proud to represent, you know, Almani Union High School District, both of you. And I think you are the first one ever got selected. Am I right or wrong? So, you know, we so proud, and congratulations, and I hope you the best for what you're doing, and, you know, lots of success. Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you very much.
So how incredibly proud both of you must be to have been on that stage, like they said, it's a world stage. But I want to applaud the music teachers from all our districts, and I think that goes to the importance of art and music in our schools and in our district, because without that, we wouldn't have such a great music teachers. But to both of you, keep shining. I can't wait to see what you're going to do next year, both of you. But we are absolutely proud, proud beyond what words can express, of all the hard work and dedication and accomplishments. And with that, I just want you to know that you have the full support of this district, of this community, for both of you, even after you graduate, and we want to see you go as far as you can and inspire And we wanna see you go as far as you can, and inspire other students here who also have the great potential, but might be a little bit afraid to showcase their talents. So, thank you both for giving us this opportunity to see greatness, and we hopefully get to see it again.
I just wanna start off by saying wow, for being young people and being able to get up there and march and perform, I don't think I could do it. So, what an amazing accomplishment to you both. And again, thank you to our teachers, our music teachers who are supporting our students to reach for these opportunities, that's phenomenal. Congratulations to you both, and I'm just really proud and excited for you guys. I feel like Mr. Pidiya said, "The sky is the limit" for you two, this is such a big accomplishment at such a young age.
The stars are the limit, as Mr. Nguyen says. I just wanna wrap it up by saying congratulations to both of you. Again, I think I'm committing the sin of envy tonight, 'cause I'm incredibly jealous of you. For one reason, when I was a student in Mountain View, I wanted to apply to the Honor Band, and because my brain doesn't always work, I missed the deadline to apply. And then I attended PCC, where I could have applied again, but then I chose to work full time right away, so I couldn't enroll in the music classes. But I had tons of friends at PCC at the time, who were music students, who did participate in the Honor Band at the Tournament of Roses, and I didn't, and you did. And I wanna tell you that this year, I made it a point to get really good seats at the Rose Parade, so that I could see you guys marching down the street. And I had some awesome seats on Orange Grove, I saw the Herald Trumpets coming up, and then the Royal Court, and then the Honor Band, and beyond jealous, more than anything, I was incredibly proud, knowing that our students were there, that the both of you were there representing the Almonte Union High School District. So, on behalf of the board, I just wanna say how wonderful it is to have you here, to know that you guys have participated in this worldwide event. This is not a national stage, it's a world stage, and you guys have just made us incredibly proud. Do me a favor, turn around, let me see the back of your sweater and your jacket, show the cameras. So, as I said earlier, and as I say to all of our students, always remember, wherever you go, wherever you end up, you started off here in Almonte, you were an Eagle, you were a Viking, you make us proud. So, on behalf of the board, I wanna present these certificates of recognition to you, to Aaron and to Aiden, for your exceptional talent, dedication, and hard work, which have earned you the distinguished honor of being selected to participate in the 2025 Tournament of Roses Parade. Your participation in this event is a testament to your achievements and reflects your commitment to excellence. Congratulations from the Almonte Union High School District Board of Trustees. And again, I wanna point out that we have these lovely lapel pins for you, so wherever you go, wear them with pride. You know, if you're ever able to pin them on a uniform, wherever you go, you know, please, and people will ask, "Where's that from?", and you'll tell them, "It's from my time at the Almonte Union High School District." So, congratulations again, and to your parents, if parents are here, mom and papa, if you wanna stand up. Thank you again for sharing your wonderful students with us, and then again, to your commitment to their studies and to their activities, both on campus and off campus. Thank you for taking the time to drive them around, I was a music student myself, and I know the commitment that it takes to have parents wake up, you know, early on a Saturday morning, or to go and pick up late in the evening after a practice. Thank you again, you know, my heart goes out to you, and congratulations to our students, to Aaron and to Aiden. So at this time, if the board can assemble, so we can take a photo, and then we'll step out to, you stay too. And then we'll step out to have staff take a photo. Instructional report and student representative update, Dr. Zuniga, I'll hand it over to you.
Yes, it's our, again, this is, as we get into 2025, we're gonna continue to demonstrate what's happening throughout our district through the instructional report, and a rural high school is here this evening for us to have an opportunity to get a snapshot about what's happening at a rural high school, though this is not the first time that we've seen presentations at a rural high school. I know that I've been impressed by the presentation, not only by our students, but also by the staff, in working together, from the school administration to the leadership in the departments, whether it's the English department, I believe it will be tonight, but also the other departments who have taken on that responsibility of collaboration, and providing that time and opportunities to support our students through the work of collaboration and not working in isolation. So I am proud again to just not only see that our school is moving forward along the school year, has had some academic success in the past, not only their actual scores, but also just, you know, being a school, a Blue Ribbon School recently... School recently, a couple of years ago, and now we get to, this evening, we will see that the work continues, it never stops, we know that too, but I know that the team has worked to prepare for tonight, to present to you, the Board of Trustees, and the work that they do every day at a Royal High School to support our Knights. I want to welcome everyone from Royal High School. I also want to welcome our principal, Mr. Gabriel Flores, who has prepared his team, and also will introduce some folks that are here this evening from a Royal High School, as well as our students. So you'll see two things, you'll see the instructional report this evening from a Royal High School, as well as the student update for you to know what's happening on behalf of the students at a Royal High School. So, Mr. Flores, welcome and good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, thank you, Board members, Board President Bionis, everyone here in attendance, and everybody watching from around the world. I want to start off by saying that congratulations to the other schools, the students that got recognized. I'm not going to lie, I was a little jealous because we went about an hour and a half hearing about these other schools, but now it's a royal time, it's our time. So we're going to take advantage of every minute that we have here. Want to start off by acknowledging Mr., our Director of Student Affairs, Mr. Bono, he's right behind me, and the reason I want to, yeah, thank you, let's give him a round of applause, please. He, along with Dr. Ortiz, our Assistant Principal, as well at a Royal High School, they put together the bulletin that as you walk into the elevator, you'll take a look at it, did a phenomenal job, you know, I said no pressure, but make it happen, and there is no pressure because he does a phenomenal job in everything that we have at a Royal High School. So thank you again, once again, for your help and support with that. At this time, we are going to start our student presentation, and we do have a few of our students that will present, we have four students, we have, not in any particular order, but we do have Maddox Jimenez, Eduardo Morales, Nui Nguyen, and our ASB president, that I'm going to call up right now, Ms. Gabby Castro. Come on up, Gabriela.
And students, when you come up, if you could please introduce yourselves.
Good evening, District Board members and everyone else attending the meeting. My name is Gabriela Castro, and I'm a Royal Student Bodies President, and I'm here with my cabinet members today, and today we're going to be discussing our student life at a Royal and our school culture. So we started the school year off strong with our annual Blue, Black, and White Assembly, also known as BBW. BBW is our assembly meant to begin our year at a Royal with fun, school spirit, and pride. Our assembly this year featured engaging games between our sports teams, such as Bubble Ball Knockout, which brought students off their seats to see who was the last man standing, and Potato Sack Races with students against teachers. We also saw some amazing performances from our band, choir, and cheer team. We ended it with the Arroyo tradition of our senior lap, where our senior class walks around the track together, and it was the first time on our newly remodeled Berdstrom Stadium. The event was a blast and an amazing way to begin the school year with some fun. Back in September, we also welcomed back our students and faculty with Back to School Night. We had an opening speech from our principal, Mr. Flores, and an update on student lives so far from ASB. Students and parents came to visit classrooms and teachers and enjoy performances from our band. Additionally, we also had a resource fair where students could learn more from representatives from different organizations, ranging from college readiness to mental health.
Hi, my name is Nui Nguyen, and I am a Royal High School ASB Vice President.
Again, I didn't capture it, one more time.
My name is Nui Nguyen.
Nui?
Yes. At a Royal football season is where students get to show off their school spirit. Students crowd to the stands at night to watch football games, rooting for our school to win. The atmosphere is lively, and there's no other event in which school spirit is displayed more than our football games. At our games, our mascot, Nighty Almighty, always arrives in style. Nighty always hypes up the crowd, and people love their interactions with Nighty. Our cheerleaders always come out during the game not to only encourage our football players, but also to interact with the crowd, leaving them more excited than ever. At our games, there's always a theme picked out by ASB. Whether the theme is Pink Out, Camo, White Out, Neon, or USA, everyone decks out in their best outfits to match the team. Our football games display a great amount of student participation and always live in school spirit. At our school, food booths happens once every few months, four times a year. Food booths always has been a great success with students showing up at Rally Square excited to buy food distributed by our clubs. Once the fourth period bell rings, students run to Rally Square to buy their food early because it gets incredibly crowded. Most clubs and sports enjoy participating in food booths because it allows them to earn money to satisfy their needs. Some popular food booth items are Butterfry Lemonade, Popcorn Chicken, Boba, and Sushi Bake.
Good evening, my name is Eduardo Morales, and I am the ASB Activities Officer, as well as the Senior Class President. Remember with joy, on November 1st, our Knights celebrated the vibrant Mexican holiday, Dia de los Muertos, to honor deceased loved ones. Our Knights were able to take part in this culture by placing images of loved ones on a friend that placed in our rally square. There was a live musical performance by Mariachi where students and staff got to dance and listen. Our ASB publicity brought this beauty of this culture alive, as students were able to get face paint with Dia de los Muertos makeup, and were able to engage and appreciate this Mexican culture by reminiscing about past loved ones. Showing spirit in style like a true knight. Spirit Week at a Royal is a vibrant week that brings students, faculty, and staff together. Each day is dedicated to a unique theme, from Pyjama Day to Sports Team Pride, demonstrating creativity and school spirit. This week's Spirit Week is focused on our winter sports rally to encourage Knights to look forward to our seasonal rallies. Spirit Days such as wearing your favorite artist merch, dressing up as Adam Sandler, dressing up as Waz Waldo, and wearing sports jerseys. Spirit Week has a positive impact at a Royal High School promoting school pride and helping students feel more engaged throughout the school year.
Good evening, my name is Maddox Jimenez, and I'm a Royal High School's ASB Speaker of the Court. Homecoming this year was amazing. Being on the ASB Board allowed me to help plan my senior year homecoming. Homecoming is something that all students look forward to, and we as an ASB needed to make sure that it was the best possible dance it could have been. Our A Night Lost in Film themed homecoming took inspiration from old Hollywood aesthetic and Hollywood movies from back in the day. 2025 is a big year for athletic seniors. It's their last year playing for a Royal High School. At the end of the season, they each get to celebrate their senior night, where they are congratulated and recognized for their hard work all season long. As this might be the final time the seniors play an organized sport as a team, they leave their marks and get the recognition they deserve.
One of the most exciting events of the first semester was our Fall Sports Rally. Volleyball, football, cross-country, and tennis came together and give updates on their season. Then we had the teams compete against each other in games such as the tricycle race, a balloon pop race, and a watermelon eating contest against our own teachers. The event was a great way to celebrate our athletes and build up spirit for the fall season. We're incredibly proud of what we've done so far, but we're also excited for what's to come. This Friday, we are hosting our Winter Sports Rally, where athletes are going to be competing in battles against our teachers, such as in a dodgeball game. Additionally, we have our Lunar New Year celebration coming up, which will feature live lion dancers to celebrate another culture here at a Royal High School. Another exciting event we are looking forward to is the Last Dance of the Year, Last Bash. We are looking forward to collecting input from the student body to put on an amazing end of the school year that can be celebrated by everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us today, and we want to end off things here like we always do at a Royal. Thank you, and as always, go Knights! Before we leave, we also have some gifts to present to the board.
So before you guys, well, first of all, thank you so much for being here tonight and presenting to the board. Before you leave, I do have a question for you. This year, 2025, is a Royal's 70th anniversary, if I'm not mistaken. Are you guys planning a big bash of some sort? Do we need to start planning a birthday party, or?
Well, that sounds like a great idea. Birthday party for our Last Bash would sound amazing. We have to get on that. Thank you for mentioning that. Yes, that is something, now we're looking forward to adding that, too. That sounds amazing.
All right, just another thing to add to your very busy agenda, but thank you again for being here today, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for taking the time to listen yesterday. It was a pleasure to present to you guys. Thank you so much.
So as the students are taking a little gift for everyone, well, not everyone, it's for our board members, our student board member, as well as our superintendent. Sorry, they get expensive. Ms. Witt is also providing the presentations for this evening. In the, just so that you know, what you are getting right now, the gift that we provided was a jacket that says a Royal High School on it. It also has a patch on the right side that says Attendance Matters. It is not the jacket that they're wearing, that is exclusive for ASB students inside administration, sorry, but you do have a very, very nice jacket that we gave to all of our staff. I hope that you enjoy it. In addition to that, we have a commemorative coin, if you will, it's a medallion, a coin, and in the back it says Knights Know. And what do knights know? Knights know pride, courage, honor, excellence, and integrity. So these are coins that we just received, and thank you for, Mr. Bono, for coming up with this idea, but I will use these to give out to people that are worthy, that exemplify what is shared on this coin here. So you are the first to have them, enjoy them. To our student representative, we got you a jacket, do not leave it lying around at South Almane High School, okay? The coin or the jacket, I want to make sure that you take good care of it, and if you don't want to give it back to us, because I know what will happen if it lands in South Almane's area.
No, I'll keep it safe.
I appreciate it. Well, congratulations, and please enjoy them and wear them. It's winter time right now, it's the perfect time to wear these jackets and stay warm and cozy, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we're ready to go. So our instructional report today is, well, we're here to present to you on our instructional report, and we'll share more about it, but we do have three presenters, we have myself, that will give you the introduction, we have Ms. Witt, our Assistant Principal that oversees instruction and curriculum, that'll provide some background and some data regarding why we are focused on writing, and again, we'll get into that in a little more detail, and we do have Ms. Cheryl Camacho, our English Department Chair, who's going to share the journey and what took place, or what's taking place in our English department, and some changes that have taken place this year. I also want to recognize some of our department members, these are all of our department members from English, not all of them, but some that could be here this evening, but they are here to support Ms. Camacho, which shows you the cohesiveness of this group, and it's just, it's really beautiful to see how they're working together to do what's right for our students. So thank you for being here. Can we give him a round of applause, please? All right, clicker. There we go. Okay, so a bit of an overview of what we're talking about today. I also know that we have new board members here who don't know the details behind what we've done the past few years at a Royal High School. So to provide some context, in 2023, we focused on cycles of inquiry. Ms. Witt will share more information about that when she presents her slides. We also focused on our English learners. In 2024, we all know that we focused on math. Math is definitely a topic that we still continue to focus on today, but last year, we spent quite a bit of time sharing what's taking place at a Royal High School regarding math, and this year, our focus will be on English. The question is why we're focusing on English and writing. Well, if we take it back to last year in the springtime, I received an email from the California Department of Education, and we were recognized as a California Distinguished School, one of only four high schools in the San Gabriel Valley, and one of a few high schools throughout the state of California. We were excited, full of joy, recognizing it, going to awards. Well, at that same time that we were receiving these awards, our current seniors that were juniors were taking the S-Back exam. Well, those results came in, and we'll share more later, but that's kind of why we're talking about writing this year, because it never, there's always a focus on continuing and improving on what we're doing, and this is the situation that we're in right now, where we really want to focus on improving. Some of the current initiatives that we have at a Royal High School right now, and within our district, are evidence-based practices and focusing on content and language objectives. In addition to content and language objectives, welcoming and inclusive environments in the classroom, as well as academic talk in the classroom. Also, we continue to focus on math and WEA with our science initiatives specific to preparing for the CAS test, and our ongoing school-wide literacy focus that has been taking place for several years within our district and our school site. And these blend into our current action plan goals that were developed in 2023, but if you think of improved literacy and math, that speaks for itself, regular assessments and evaluations, which tie into cycles of inquiry, expanding collaboration with all stakeholders, again, the focus on academic discussions and discourse, and improved school-wide accountability, which really is the content and language objectives, accountability for our students as well as our staff, and preparing for the school day. So that's some, the general information about what's taking place at a Royal High School, but again, the focus is writing and how we got to that point, and Ms. Witt now is going to share the data that drove the decision to focus on writing, because everything that we do at a Royal High School is based on data. And so at this point, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Witt.
Hello, everyone. Glad to be here tonight to be able to talk a bit about the work that we're doing at a Royal. My part of the presentation will be essentially to kind of queue you up with some background, give you a bit of context, so that my colleague Cheryl can knock this one out of the park. So here we go. So something that Mr. Flores had alluded to was that we were really excited about this fact that we were coming out of COVID and distance learning, and we were seeing gains that our kids were making. And then unfortunately, last year, when we got our CAS test results back, we saw that we had some dips. We had an eight percent dip in ELA and just about a three percent dip in math. Now, I'm going to focus on those two areas, because right now, we know that as a district, we're doing a lot to collaborate around what's happening with our math instruction. But I want to focus more specifically on what our school-wide initiatives have been really since 2019, which has been related to English language arts. So if we take a look, really, at what the trends were there, and we're looking down at the bottom where it says 2018 to 19, those are test years. So if we go, again, back in 1819, we see we are making some big gains, right, 14%. During the COVID year and post-pandemic, really kind of flatlined, and then we see that bump back up where we get excited. But again, right now, we go, okay, what happened on last year's S-Back, right? So we begin to take a deeper dive into what that meant. So when we look at literacy, we're looking really at seven domains, everything, you know, reading, writing, research, listening, vocabulary use, revising, editing. But what the S-Back is specifically looking at is four areas: reading, writing, listening, speaking, and then research and inquiry. And they refer to these areas in the testing as claims. So we see claims one, two, three, and four. Now, as our teacher groups begin to take a deeper dive into, okay, what did the S-Back test, and how did our kids do? They began to take a look at that data and break it down, begin to look at claim by claim. Well, what does it test? So if we take a look here on the bottom, under the green heading on your left, you'll note that Claim Two is about writing. And what they're looking for there is to find out, can kids compose, write, and edit? Narrative writing, explanatory writing, and argumentative writing. And so what our teachers found in looking at the data up on your top right, is that over time, the number of our students who were scoring below standard in these areas of writing was steadily increasing, and that at the top, the number of students we had that were above standard at one point were now declining. So we decided here as a department, as a school, that literacy was going to be a focus. Now, through our cycles of inquiry, we've asked all of our departments as they're meeting to focus in on an area of literacy, a domain, if you will, that they felt was really relevant to their content. Now, for those of you who maybe are not familiar with what our cycles are, throughout the year, we have three cycles, one in the fall, one in the winter, and then one in the spring, where we're bringing together our course-alike teams to meet and discuss common work that they're doing. So we ask them to focus on that common work, to develop lessons, create assessment, and then we bring them back together to discuss and calibrate what it is that they're getting with regard to student work, and make decisions about how they want to drive instruction forward. And again, the focus here has been literacy for all of us across the board. Now, with regard to the English department, while this is happening schoolwide, our content specialists were also meeting on a monthly basis in their work groups to work on developing English curriculum and assessment tools. Now, in that quest to kind of look at what are district-wide assessments, they found that they really did need to ensure that everybody was doing the same thing, right, that we had common content, that we were all looking at the same standards. So they began work around development of what were kind of power standards within the discipline, and from there, began to take a look at their course outlines. So we had content specialists, course leads, and teacher teams that began to really look and, how would we say, calibrate those course outlines, make sure that everybody was all on the same page. Now, our English department at a Royal High School took that even further. So taking from the work in their cycles over the years, and then the work that was also happening at the district, our English department, I think, is the shining example of how cycles of inquiry has evolved. So within a cycle of inquiry... So within a cycle of inquiry, when we started this process a couple of years back, we were focused on a singular school-wide strategy, a singular writing strategy, which was referred to as claim, evidence, and reasoning. And this was something that we felt that could be, that could be duplicated, whether it was in a PE class, looking at information about nutrition, or whether this was in an English class, looking at an explanatory writing piece. Through that work, then, our English department began to look at their S-Back data and began to, again, as I mentioned, dive in to see where the kids were performing well and where they weren't, where supports were needed. And through that process, they came to the conclusion that there was a great opportunity here to do some alignment, not just horizontally across their coursework, you know, all of the English nine teachers, for example, but vertically, taking a look to ensure that skills were progressing from one year to the next and that there were common assessments and scoring rubrics in place. And so with that, we begin what Cheryl is going to speak to you about regarding unleashing the power of their alignment. So I'd like to ask Cheryl Camacho, our English Department Chair, to come on up, and I will do the slides for you. Would you want to hold the mic or you want to?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am really excited to share with you tonight the journey our English department has taken to strengthen our writing instruction at AHS. Tonight, I want to show you how we are transforming the way we teach writing through a focused initiative we are calling "Unleashing the Power of Alignment." When I stepped into my role as English Department Head in August 2023, I found myself diving into a sea of documents. Course outlines, curriculum guides, department Google classrooms, and a Google Drive bursting with resources. This, coupled with the data that we had spent many hours discussing and breaking down from state testing, common assessments, and student grades, led to my discovery that while we had amazing teachers doing great work, something wasn't quite clicking. Our students were not finding the success that we knew they could. As a result, I set out to make a change. We began by focusing the conversations in our department and in our course-alike meetings toward how we could better implement the resources and goals we created at both the district and site level in order to improve student success. It was through these conversations that we discovered and collectively agreed that students were not experiencing a smooth progression of writing skills from year to year. There were gaps in what our students knew and were able to do. Although extensive work has been done amongst course-alike teams to align curriculum, we had not focused on the vertical alignment of these skills from year to year, particularly in writing. But before I dive into what we've been working on to help improve student success in writing, let me tell you a little bit about how our department has established a solid collaboration structure to support teacher development and student success. We have 13 English teachers at AHS. We meet as a full department on Fridays before Late Start during our long lunch collaboration time. And we use this time to share best practices and discuss the work we are doing at our different levels. Then, during the week of Late Start, our four course-alike teams meet Tuesday through Thursday during their lunchtime, allowing for focused curriculum planning and assessment alignment. To provide clear direction to our teams, we have four incredible course leads who guide curriculum development and implementation. However, what's great is that our teachers are still able to maintain professional autonomy to adapt instruction to their students' needs. Autonomy is crucial for English teachers' effectiveness. Being able to select text and adopt their teaching methods to student needs lets us develop critical thinking and writing skills in very meaningful ways. However, even with the strong English collaboration we have established at AHS, we've identified two key areas for improvement. First, we saw that we needed to implement vertical alignment team meetings with our course leads in order to ensure skill progression across grade levels. And second, we saw the need for a place to organize and house our curriculum and resources. I knew that to have effective vertical alignment team meetings, we needed to review all the work that we had been doing on, for the past few years, and organize it in a way that was practical and easy to follow. So I developed what we now call our English Department Curriculum Guide and Collaboration Resource. Think of it as a one-stop shop for everything our teachers need. It's a living document where teachers can find their course standards for their level, agreed-upon book lists, and share their best lesson plans and writing prompts. The beauty of it is that it's collaborative. Every, every English teacher can edit and contribute, making it a true reflection of our collective expertise. Like I said, it's a living document, and our English teachers are starting to see the benefit of this collaborative resource. I'd love you to take a peek at the work that we've been doing on this. So we've printed out some copies for you to peruse through a little later in your packet. Since 2018, we've been focusing heavily on teaching the CER framework, Claim, Evidence, Reasoning, through our monthly course-alike team meetings and school-wide cycles of inquiry. It's a solid framework, but we discovered through our collaborative discussions that data analysis, and data analysis, that while our students could write basic paragraphs using CER, they were struggling with more complex writing tasks. They could follow the basic formula, but their academic writing skills were not progressing from year to year in a way that met CCSS grade standards. As a result, as content specialist and department head, in conjunction with the course leads, we began an effort to work toward a vertically-aligned curriculum that emphasized common standards-based assessment. So here's what that looked like. From the CCSS standards, our department identified three key types of writing that our students need to master throughout their four years. Narrative, argumentative, and explanatory. And our course leads, which have now become our vertical alignment team, then mapped out how these skills should logically progress from freshman to senior year. This shift ensured that skills introduced in one grade are reinforced and expanded in the next. Here's a real example of why this matters. Our junior teachers noticed a consistent pattern in their assessments. Students struggled to integrate evidence, develop counterarguments, and use MLA formatting. These challenges weren't isolated, they were systemic. The issue wasn't a lack of teaching, but a lack of alignment. One of the problems that emerged from not having our writing instruction aligned across the grade levels was that there were inconsistent foundations. Some students might have learned MLA formatting in freshman year while others didn't, because there was no clear agreement on which teacher was responsible for introducing that skill. Without explicit coordination, teachers might have assumed someone else already taught this, or someone else will teach this later. There was also an issue with random reinforcement. Even if students learned how to integrate evidence in sophomore year, without intentional alignment and looking at vertical data, that skill might not have been regularly practiced in other classes, because skills that aren't consistently reinforced tend to weaken over time. And here is a screenshot of what that looks like with the four years of vertically-aligned argumentative writing. Ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. Now, with our vertically-aligned progression, every teacher builds on the work of the previous year, creating a seamless path for students to grow as writers. So how did we put this into action? Building upon the work of the district content specialist to revise course outlines and discuss power standards, our team at AHS set to work developing rubrics around our common expectations for student success. Our course leads met over this past summer to draft rubrics for narrative and argumentative writing, the two types of writing we focused on this past fall semester. But we didn't just impose those rubrics on teachers. We brought them to our course-alike teams for feedback and refinement. Everyone had a voice in the process. The implementation timeline was then carefully planned to include opportunities for teacher collaboration through our cycles of inquiry release time and PD days. Once the rubrics were finalized at the start of the school year, we established common writing assessment windows. This gave teachers the freedom, flexibility, and professional, professional autonomy to teach novels and stories they're passionate about, while ensuring we all work toward the same skill development goals simultaneously at every grade level. As a result, when teachers assign formal essays, every student in the same grade level is evaluated using the same rubric, regardless of which text they studied. But we didn't just stop there. We know that the data collection and analysis process is crucial to our success. So as teachers grade essays, using the common rubrics that we developed, you'll see the rubric for argumentative writing on the left. They keep detailed tally sheets tracking how students perform on different aspects of the rubric. And you can see the example tally sheet there on the right. This information gets compiled by course leads and shared on our collaborative resource document. Then, course-alike teams meet to share and discuss student work in order to calibrate their grading, share best teaching practices, and refine the writing rubric for the next cycle. So although we have these writing rubrics in place, they are still living documents that we are able to adjust as we look at the data. Additionally, we're excited by the implications that this practice and organizational structure will have beyond the current grade level. Here's where it gets exciting. An 11th-grade teacher can look back and see exactly how their incoming students performed on writing skills in 10th grade, allowing them to target instruction where it's needed most. This collaborative alignment ensures equitable instruction while enabling teachers to meet students at their individual levels, creating pathways for all students to advance to higher skill levels. Our goal is simple but powerful. To equip every Royal High School student with the writing skills they need to thrive in college, in their careers, and in life. We're already seeing positive impacts across multiple areas. Our teachers report feeling more confident in their writing instruction because they have clear guidelines and expectations. New teachers who may join our department, or teachers who may change the level they are teaching, will have a roadmap to follow, and our cross-grade collaboration has increased significantly. While it's still early to see the full impact on student achievement, we're seeing promising signs of more consistent writing quality across grade levels. Moving forward, our English department is committed to making this system sustainable by continuing to refine our rubrics based on student performance data, holding calibration sessions to ensure consistent grading, and continuing to build our shared resource library through our collaborative living document. This isn't just a one-year project. It's a fundamental shift in how we approach writing instruction at a Royal. The most exciting part, we're just getting started. This is our anchor year, and we're learning and adjusting as we go. In the spring, we'll be expanding our focus to include explanatory writing, completing our comprehensive approach to the three main types of writing our students need to master. We feel confident that our work as a department demonstrates the power of alignment and will help improve learning outcomes for all students in conjunction with broader district efforts. Thank you for letting me share our journey. Right now, either myself or my colleagues would be happy to answer any questions that you have about our process or our plans for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. Yes, a round of applause. So at this time, I'll open up questions to the board. I'll start off with one. If you could go back to the slide on the, on the rubrics. That one there. So you shared that you gather, you know, you're telling up the, the rubrics for, for the student essays, and then you share the data, because as you stated, the data is, it's crucial, it's important. Is this data for individual rubrics being presented back to the students to show where they are excelling or where there are deficiencies?
As far as the overall data, no.
Not the overall data, but the individual student rubric?
Yes, so every student will receive back their rubric that will show them what level that they're at, so that they can see by category where they fall.
Is there any feedback in the, in the rubric? Let me give you a quick example. You know, a year ago, I had to write an essay for a class, and it was a semester-long project for this, this law course that I was taking. And the professor provided a rubric to each of us, and it showed where we fell on each item, but it also provided feedback on, on each section. So if there was an area where we were doing really well on providing, you know, context on this particular paper, or if there was a deficiency, perhaps our argument wasn't clear, or the evidence that we were providing wasn't sufficient, there was feedback to each one of us. Granted, it did take a little bit of time, because, you know, these are 12 to 15-page papers. These are a bit shorter, I would assume. But are we providing that feedback back to the individual student?
They're getting a very detailed rubric that you see here. So with that, the teachers have, you know, the discretion if they want to make personal comments on their essays and all that. But as far as the feedback they're, they're getting, it's very detailed with the rubric, because we wanted to kind of cover all bases for them.
And that's being provided to each student individually?
To each student, right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they are receiving feedback. I do appreciate collecting all the data, and then as a department, going over it and, and working through where there are strengths and where there are areas to, to improve. But I also want to make sure that the students are receiving that feedback as well, so that they understand their own skills. And more importantly, to hear back from their instructors. You know, hey, you're doing really great in this area, but perhaps you need to, you need to improve in, in this section of your essay. And this is how you can do that, or come and see me if you have any questions. I see a hand in the audience. Come on up to the lectern. Introduce yourself before you continue.
Chris Macklin. Howdy, how y'all doing? When it comes to the feedback, lots of times, our teachers do not show them the entire rubric. Eyes glaze over when they look at every single section. Whereas, let's say, for example, I myself will use Google Classroom comment section. I'll go over their strengths and their weaknesses with the comments in particular there. And that more directly lets them know exactly what they did well and what they didn't do well, leaving also marks on the document itself that they can go back and redo as many times as they want in order to improve for a better grade. They don't have to, but again, I'm not the only teacher who does that. But they're offered the chance to redo, let's say they get a C, again and again until they get the A, by using the comments.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, that clarity, because that was what I was going to get to. Since we're using Google Classroom, obviously, there's, there's comments that you can leave or, or track changes that you can make as well. And I do appreciate that, because that makes it clear that there is feedback being presented, provided to the students and the opportunity to improve on the document for a final grade.
And it also makes clear to the students that the editing is an ongoing process.
Right. Thank you so much. That was my only question, so I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Dr. Guzman?
Yes, yes. Thank you for that great presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and actually, this is the perfect slide to stay on. In terms of the ability for early intervention, when you see, based on the data that you're collecting, that maybe a student or a few students might not be progressing how you want them and hitting their mark, is the current ability to provide that early intervention based on the timeframe of, of an entire cycle? Or is there opportunities within that for you to look at the data and say, okay, you know, we've, a month into school, and this student has missed the mark on these things, based on the data, we're able to provide early intervention at that point? So that's question number one. At what point are you able to? At what point are you able to, based on the data, provide early intervention? Yeah, absolutely, come on up.
One of the, Brian Unger, you guys, I was up here earlier. One of the ways that we do that is through Shields Up, the program we have at Arroyo. So we could choose to have a tutorial in our classroom, which most of us in here have done, and so the students, we look through our roster, and the students that are struggling, that are D, or like right on the precipice of a D or an F, and they're struggling particularly in our subject, obviously, English, we'll bring them in for these tutorials, and we can work one-on-one with these kids during that time period at 24 minutes right before lunch, Monday through Thursday, and that gives us an excellent opportunity to work one-on-one with these students. It's very difficult with the class sizes we have to work with these kids one-on-one. A lot of us have 35 kids in a room, very difficult to do that, but one of the ways that we can do that, and we do that, so you were talking about early intervention, we start that right away in the year. If we see kids that are starting to struggle, we bring them in, and I find that extremely valuable, because again, it's working one-on-one with the student. It's difficult to do that. I also tutor in the library one day a week after school, but I'm talking about four days a week, so I have about 20 kids in my classroom during that period, and I could call them up over the course of a week, one at a time, and go over assignments with them and help them with their writing, and that's a really great intervention program that we have at Arroyo. That's one of the programs we have at Arroyo, and it makes a huge difference just being able to work one-on-one with these kids and look at their writing skills, and again, look at the rubrics with them, look at the writing assignment with them, particularly the essays, and even just the day-to-day assignments, and really hone in on the difficulties they're having. So that's just one way that we go about with this intervention with the writing.
Thank you for that. That's actually really helpful to know that, one, there's already a program there, but also that early intervention is really early intervention, right? Because then it gets that much more complicated for all of you who are doing the work. The other question, I think regarding early intervention and your ability to do that, I think you touched on it, that you have a lot of students, so it's hard. What would you say would be something that, not necessarily missing from your side, but maybe a resource or support that would actually make your ability to provide that early intervention more effective? I know it's a very, might be a very long question, but if there's any one thing that comes up on how we can, because I think the biggest issue is we're collecting data, which is great, and we're able to see that vertical alignment, making sure everything's working, but when it's not, I think that's where I want to know that we're supporting you and that you have everything you need to be successful for the students that are not making that progress.
I think as a former social science teacher, a big difference amongst the disciplines is that English teachers have a very heavy load. Teaching writing is something that really becomes a kind of a one-on-one journey, right? Like where you're constantly having to go through that revision process. So you're receiving that feedback that you're talking about, and then I'm having to go back and rewrite and rewrite. I can tell you, just even the length of time that it takes to put together a presentation, you're all familiar with this, right? And so to speak on their behalf, I think that something that is beneficial is having fewer students to work with, and I think that that's something that Mr. Unger was able to kind of highlight, that when you can get kids into a smaller setting and give them really true, authentic feedback, whether that's through Shields Up or reduction in class size, I think that that's where we can really provide the most support in writing to our kids.
Absolutely.
Mr. Colvin, come on up to the lectern.
When I first started, I didn't think that possible, but the state had a program called class size reduction in 9th and 10th grade, English and Math, and the class sizes were held down, and it made for much more, a much closer intensive exchange between the student and the teacher. The teacher can spend more time because they have fewer students, and I think that that's something that we need to get back to.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. I'm going to go over to Mr. Nguyen, and then I'll come over to you. Trustee Nguyen?
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Camacho. You know, vertical alignment is very important. No matter, math or ELA, it's the same thing. Without vertical alignment, you cannot progress nicely, and the first thing is we have to be honest to ourselves, be transparent to ourselves, identify the weakness, and you did it all, and you're able to come up with a plan to remedy it. You know, sometimes people don't plan to fail, they fail because they don't have a plan, but definitely you have a plan, and I applaud you for that. One thing I noticed in the rubric over here, if every essay you grade in rubric, it will take a lot of time, a lot of work for the teacher, and I want to echo what the concern of the teacher down there say, and the class size does have, you know, importance, but on the other hand, we have to understand everything controlled by budget and money. So whatever we do, we do the best we can, and you know, I really appreciate the hard work of the teacher that put in to work. You know, just look at the data, like tutor.com. A Arroyo student used the most tutor.com data. That means they work very hard, like you can say, they use most of the tutor.com, and the next one is Almani. You know, that's why I'm asking for data from the Assistant Superintendent, you know, tutor.com, how we can help them to progress. And you know, I can see that, you know, look at, glance at the data, Arroyo, you know, you have a lot of hard-working students using that data, using that resource to help them to improve. For that, you know, I kudos to the leadership of, you know, Mr. Grabiel, you know, and you know, Mr. McGuett, for, you know, your leadership and all the entire teacher, and I know it's a hard job for all of you, for that, I really appreciate it very much, and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Nguyen. Trustee Padilla?
Yes, so I'll be the elephant in the room, okay? I'm going to ask the question, you know, I'm going to come with some hard questions. I've been on this board for 11 years, going on 11 years, and I know that in mathematics, I learned quite a bit. One of the things that I learned with mathematics across the district was that we previously did not have an assessment, and everybody was all over the place. I understand, I heard the words autonomy, freedom, flexibility. I understand that, and I don't have concerns about a Arroyo High School. You guys are great with academics and your achievement, you're great with your attendance, you kick butt, you know, because your kids come to school, there's high achievement. You guys kick butt when it comes to the arts, but when it came to math, you know, the last time that Arroyo was here, we had a big disagreement, and the disagreement was that we were not okay with every single high school having their own assessment for mathematics. Why was that a problem? It was a problem because we, as a board, couldn't get the data to look at apples to apples to apples to apples. I see that the work has been very well thought out and stuff like that, but how do we avoid a Arroyo High School, and I know you can only speak for Arroyo, so maybe this is a question for our leadership, our Assistant Superintendent Services, how do we avoid you guys working in a silo, right? Because I also have to be concerned about what's happening with English Language Arts at Mountain View High School, what's happening with English Language Arts at El Monte High School. How do we avoid that, you know, all the work that you're doing is also replicated in our other high schools, because otherwise, we're going to turn out with the same thing we ended up with math? So for me is, what are you using as your assessment tool for a baseline when it comes to Language Arts, so that the board can see, this is the baseline, this is where we're all starting. Data's not good, data's not bad, but the data is the data, and in education, we always say, we make data-driven decisions, right? As a board, we are no different than your leads, your principal, all of your leaders, you make decisions based on data, which is how you guys got Shields Up. I applaud Shields Up, it is one of the best kickbutt programs in the school district. Why is it successful? Because it happens during the day. You all know that we spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars after school, and the kids don't show up. Would you agree with that? The ones that need it do not show up. I know that for a fact, right? So I applaud Shields Up, 24 minutes intervention, but do, in this district, do we have a common assessment for English Language Arts?
So I can let you know that as a former content specialist for English, that was the work that was started last year with our team. We did have discussion, that's where this all kind of stemmed from, was conversations with, I know specifically Rosemead High School and Mountain View High School, we were kind of working together developing what that looks like with vertical alignment, and we shared what we were doing at our own school sites, and we were trying to connect the dots and say, what can we collectively do across the board at all of our schools?
Got it.
But however, with us kind of dispersing with the content specialists, we were not able to continue that work. So I chose to continue that work at our school site, since I no longer have that capability of meeting with the other content specialists.
Got it.
So that's kind of where that started, and then again, I couldn't continue with them, so I needed to continue with my team.
So you just revealed something to me, that the content specialists from across the district were not doing the same thing. You might be doing it a little bit with Arroyo, a little bit with Rosemead, a little bit with one high school, but for me, I have to make decisions for the entire school district, so I'm going to come back to the elephant in the room. Do we have a common assessment in English Language Arts in this school district?
We do not at this point.
Okay, that was my question. So I love the work that you're doing, I like the rubric, and I'm telling you, I'm a former Almani Union High School District student, you know, I came from Rosemead, but I also remember that I was the uniparAGRAPH kid that, you know, wrote a lot, but you know, didn't understand the introductory paragraph, the body, the conclusion. It wasn't until I got to Rio Hondo College that I realized that I wasn't as great a writer as I thought that I was, right? So I kind of felt like Rosemead High School failed me. So I want to make sure that we don't fail students today, so I guess, I love everything that you're doing, but you're working in a silo, based on what I've heard, okay? So how do we hire a person to bring it all together, or these content specialists, so that we are getting apples to apples to apples? Because I want an A at your school, at a Arroyo High School, and this was always the criticism, even with mathematics. How do we ensure that an A in math at Arroyo is equivalent to an A at Mountain View High School? How do we tell parents, like, yes, they're getting the same thing? And I'm not, I agree with the flexibility and giving teachers that flexibility, I agree, but when you give the teachers too much flexibility, everybody starts heading in the different direction, and then we cannot control. So we need to agree on some, like the essentials or the bare minimum, that everybody's going to get this at every school, whether they move from Arroyo to Rosemead, and you know, we know that our highest test scores in this district tend to be from Rosemead High School, Arroyo High School, and recently from El Monte High School, based on the data that I looked at, right? But for me, that's just my only area of improvement that maybe our district needs to answer that question, because I do know that NWEA also has an English Language Arts assessment, you know? And again, if we're truly going to make decisions based on our data, we need the same tool to gather the data. We can't have you doing your own assessment and everybody else having a different assessment. To me, as a board member, that does not fly, because I'm not comparing the apples to the apples, and I've learned it with mathematics, and it was excruciating, and it was excruciating when you guys made your presentations, and you were super angry with me and this board when we shot you down, when you wanted to approve the UC Irvine Math Program, and we told you no. And now I'll tell you why we told you no. We told you no because all the other teachers from the other school districts were calling us and saying, oh, you're not going to approve our, you know, the program that we want, but you're going to approve Goody Two Shoe Arroyo, and that's how some teachers refer to you guys, and you are a Goody Two Shoe. You guys are a California distinguished school for a reason. So we said, no, we're not approving any assessments till we decide on one. You know, that was a major, a major fight here with the teachers, that they didn't want the NWA. Now, a lot of people are thanking the board and Dr. Rivas and Dr. Zuniga, and you know, the tosta that we have, because now the board can truly get, you know, apples to apples. So again, I don't want you to do all this work, Ms. Camacho, and I've known you since you were the Abbott teacher and I was Abbott Coordinator, and I'd go visit you and the whole thing, and you know the tutorology always ended up being mathematics. Here, we're focusing on a different subject area, but that's my only concern. There's a lot of work going into this, but don't go at it alone, because we're going to be barking up the same tree with the same concerns of disproportionality with achievement across the district.
So if we could allow staff an opportunity to answer?
And I understand where we're going with this, Mr. Padilla, 100%, but I also want to commend our teachers.
Absolutely, don't get me wrong, Mr. Flores.
I want to share with you that, even though that's the work, I want to make sure that we recognize these teachers, because--
Mr. Flores, I know, I know.
Mr. Padilla?
You're making it sound like I am not appreciative--
Hold on, hold on. Gentlemen?
I did not, I actually feel that you're very appreciative.
I am appreciative of the work they're doing.
Mr. Padilla?
So I take offense to you making it sound like I'm not--
Mr. Padilla, if you'll please stop. Allow staff to respond to your question.
I know, but he's saying that I'm putting the teachers down. I'm not going to speak up.
I'm asking you to allow them to respond, not interrupt.
Okay, that's how I'm taking it, when you're saying that. I need to give the teachers credit. I am giving the teachers credit.
Mr. Padilla, if you will please cease from interrupting and allow staff to respond to your inquiry. Thank you. Mr. Flores, go ahead.
Yeah, for the record, at no point did I say that, and what I started off by saying was that I understood where Mr. Padilla was going with this, 100%. What I was sharing is that I want to commend our teachers, because our teachers, regardless of where we're at, have taken the initiative as a school site to say, hey, you know what? We're going to continue to band together, work collaboratively to do what's best for our students. Again, at no point did I say that was I going against you or anyone for that matter. In fact, I started off by acknowledging what you said, but I also want to support our teachers and make sure that we recognize the work that they have put in to get to this point. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Wood, I think you were going to answer the question that was posed.
No, what I was thinking was about the fact that, and I'm very familiar with the NWA assessments now and the work that our Math Department is doing in conjunction with the district. In fact, we've got a meeting tomorrow to take a look at our data. And if, in fact, we were to move in that direction for ELA as well, to have common data across the district, it wouldn't be a problem for us in that this work can complement that, because at the end of the day, when it comes to the SBA assessment, when it comes to our English curriculum, the reality is, everybody needs to write these essays, everybody at every grade level, and the work that our staff has done to try to continue the work that we were doing district-wide is really just an extension of that, and I feel very confident in the fact that our group can be leaders in continuing that work. So I don't see this as being two separate things, one having to go away in order to have another. In reality, I think that this is something that could, that could in fact be complementary, and again, necessary in terms of the building of these rubrics district-wide, because everybody's going to teach these essays.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla, do you have any further questions?
I agree with Ms. Wood 110%, and you and I have worked together, you know, for many years, when you were the coordinator of Abbott and Curriculum and everything, and so I agree. My only concern is that--
Could you turn on your mic? I think your mic is off.
Sorry about that. My only concern, and again, it's from lessons learned, hard lessons learned for mathematics. So I want to be clear for the record, I applaud all the work that you guys do. This is painstaking work. It takes a long time to create a rubric. It takes a long time to do all those tallies. All I'm saying is, don't go at it alone by yourself. I did hear Ms. Camacho say that, hey, we used to do, we used to work with the content specialists, a little bit with Rosemead High School, and a little bit with another high school. For me, though, it's a thing that our district leadership needs to address to put it out there, what the expectations are going to be with English Language Arts. And I know this is a hard task for Dr. Rivas, and Dr. Rivas, I'm not criticizing you either, because you have taken on mathematics, you have segregated data for mathematics, you know, by the different ethnic groups, from the different grades, from the different districts, from the Mountain View School District, from the Almani City School District, from the Violento School District. You have given us everything that we have asked for. I know this is another big task that we have to take on, because the data has identified that that is a need that we need to take on, and so I applaud all those teachers, and the fact that all those men, teachers, or the teachers are back there, I know that a Arroyo High School comes with it. And again, you're not a California-- And again, you're not a California Distinguished School, just, you know, by a fluke. You're a California Distinguished School because you do some serious work. Same thing with Rosemead High School. I would wish that our other high schools would achieve at that high level. But I know that it's a work in progress. And the stuff that you guys do and the stuff that Rosemead does and when you guys speak, you guys are the experts. But again, I don't want to go down that road again. It's like, we have to learn from past experiences and then get better at it. This is just a different subject, but we need to approach it in the same manner that we've already learned how to attack math. Are we going to fix it overnight? No, because the problem has grown for many years. It's going to take a lot of intentional work. And if it means that, when I'm hearing from Ms. Camacho, that the content specialists must come together to identify these things, then that's where we need to add to what you're already doing. So kudos to your presentation. You always come with it, you bring good data, you bring good ideas. Shields Up, you know, I wish every school did Shields Up. Because that has been the answer to our intervention question for whatever area we need to, to assess. Why? Because it happens during the day. The research shows that if you do intervention during the day, it is the most effective. So thank you for your presentation. No further questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Padilla. Trustee Pablo.
Hi, I just wanted to say, this is less of a question, it's more of a comment. But I think that this is an excellent idea that you guys are carrying forward. I know that recently, this like past week, I was talking with my English teacher about how she feels about like the English department. And she was like, I think it's a great idea that like, that people, that each teacher teaches their different curriculums. And, and here you guys build a foundation where everyone has a central idea of where your students should be at a certain grade level while still giving your teachers that opportunity to teach different ways of, of, of what this builds on, right? So just kudos to you guys. That's all.
Thank you, Trustee Pablo. Trustee Galavies.
Okay. So I'm not a big fan of like talking about what I do or my accomplishments just because I don't think what this is about. But I think for the context of what I'm about to share, it's important. I've worked in an education services department at a school district before, right below an assistant superintendent. So, and I only say that because I am so impressed by what you guys presented us with this evening. And I am actually the Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction at a high school down the road. So with that, some of the key things that I heard, and I'm going to try and make this short and sweet, but this is my wheelhouse, so bear with me folks. I heard phrases like vertical alignment, common formative assessments. Wasn't the word formative, but I know that that's what you guys mean. I heard data discussions and common rubrics. Many times districts, schools get as far as common assessments. We don't develop common rubrics half the time. It's a lot of work, a lot, a lot of work. I really liked data discussions. I guess one of my questions would be just to kind of elaborate on what Trustee Rionis was saying along with a little bit of what Trustee Guzman had to add. Is there room for in the future perhaps implementing data chats with students? Just something to think about along the road? Because I did hear that you said that this is year one. Then this is phenomenal work for year one. I also heard it be said tonight that there was an aha moment, that there was something missing. Oftentimes, that's where that ends amongst teaching staff. The fact that, I also heard that followed up by, I decided to make a change. And then I heard something about positive use of PLC time. That doesn't happen everywhere or every day, or sometimes even during the school year. Kudos to coming into work in the summer to move this plan forward. Oftentimes, teachers do not want to come in during the summer. I understand that we pay you, but they still don't want to come in because they work really hard all year long. And so some people really do need a break. So thank you for coming in and taking the time to continue to move this plan forward. I think having autonomy over text selection is very important. Just because if you're passionate about what your students are reading, then you're going to be more passionate about what you're teaching, right? And if you're putting more of yourself into it, you're more excited about it. I hated reading until my senior year at a Royal. When I learned that I love to read, now I read all the time. Well, while I was getting my doctorate, I stopped reading altogether, it felt like, because I was just reading so much research. But recently, last year, I started to pick up books again, but I needed a break after that. So you guys are doing some really amazing work. It's the beginning. Nothing happens overnight. Change takes time. We probably won't see the effects of this fully for years to come, but you're moving in the right direction. The fact that you guys come together as a staff and care to move in the right direction. I also took some time to look at your like all-in-one document. I see that you have links for everything, which is awesome. A question of mine was where you have your pacing guide, because it's linked in here. I see that everything is like hyperlinked, which is awesome. Is that a district-wide pacing guide or is that, yeah, so awesome. So in the future, we can take this live document, turn around and give it to all our schools because the pacing guide aligns with the fact that it's district-wide pacing, correct? Yes, am I, am I correct in assuming that? Okay, so I just am super proud as an alumni and also to sit on this board and then somebody who, you know, does this for a living, like I'm blown away all the way around. And for you to get up here as a teacher and just give that long of a presentation, amazing work. And thank you to the team at a Royal High School for starting something that I think we can put into practice across the district as we see how like the growth of it, like the grows and glows. Because there'll be like some areas of growth, right? But there's definitely, I think, a lot of glows that will come from this. And then lastly, I want to say how beneficial this will be to all the other subjects. So oftentimes, we talk about math and English. And I don't know why we only focus on those two things. Kids go to school, students go to school to study so many other things aside from math and English. We also oftentimes leave out the cast. And so everything you're doing in here with CREs and just all this work will directly impact cast scores as well. So you're kind of hitting two state assessments and you're not even talking about it. And then when we think of math now, we have Common Core Math, which we all know has a lot more words in it than it does numbers compared to what math used to be. Oftentimes, as somebody who's a little bit older, right, or as parents, we think like, oh, math, numbers, numbers, numbers. When you open a math book now, there's a lot less numbers than there were in the past. So honing in on these skills is only also going to help our students like unpack math problems, right? Or look for those words that we're teaching them just how to identify. So just kudos for all this work.
Thank you, Trustee Galavies. Thank you, Royal High School. Thank you, Mr. Flores, Ms. Camacho, Mrs. Wood, the rest of the English department for being here tonight. I appreciate your time, your dedication to our students. Appreciate the presentation. And as always, if there's anything that we can do to assist you in assisting our students in their achievement, please let us know. Have a wonderful evening and thank you again.
Thank you. As you said, as always, I thought we were going to say good nights.
As always, good night.
Thank you, everyone.
And of course, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, you are not required to. Have a safe drive home. Okay, moving right along to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is items, includes items that are routine in nature. At this time, are there any items that a member would like to pull for discussion? Trustee Nguyen.
Yeah, yes, bring back wherever you go from the DC and share with us. You know, on your, you know, trip on February. I'm looking forward to hear from you.
Absolutely. And I was telling, just really quickly, what Mr. Nguyen, Trustee Nguyen is referring to is I will be attending the National School Boards Association Equity Conference later, actually in February, almost February. And I was talking to Dr. Zuniga about it yesterday. I initially, I thought that it had already occurred. And then I realized that it hadn't occurred. And then of course, the big elephant in the room is we have a new administration. And I realized it's pretty imperative for us to work with the other school districts throughout the country on common messaging and how we can work together to lobby for our students or to advocate for our students, not just here in California through California School Boards Association, but also across the entire United States through NSBA. So I will be attending the, the conference in February. And yes, I will definitely bring back and report back on our activities. And we, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there are going to be meetings on the Hill with, with members. I don't know if they're necessarily with our members, but definitely appreciate any feedback that you would like me to provide to our federal representatives. And then hopefully, we can implement what, what I learned and bring back from NSBA at the Coast to Coast Conference in April. So appreciate that. Mr. Padilla, any items you'd like to discuss?
Uh, no, no items.
Okay, Trustee Galavies.
No items.
Trustee Guzman?
No items.
Okay, and I have no items. So before I ask for a motion, I do want to share this. Just because of the last couple of meetings, we went through this a few times. And so I want to share for when we get to the consent or the regular agenda, please allow me to finish reading the titles before you make a motion or second a motion. This is not a race. You know, allow me to, to finish reading the title so folks understand what it is that we're going to be discussing and voting on before making a motion or seconding that motion. And in the future, and I'll kind of formalize this through Dr. Zuniga when we get to roundtable and talk about study session, there's an item that you would like to make the motion on because it's something that, you know, is important to you for some reason. Case in point, in the past when we've adopted resolutions, say for, you know, National Women's Month, we traditionally have deferred to our female colleagues on the board. When we've celebrated National Coming Out Day or LGBTQ Month, folks have traditionally deferred to me to make the motions on those items and provide a statement. If there's something that you would like to make the motion on moving forward, you can let Dr. Zuniga know when you have your discussion with him. And then he can let me know so that I can call on you and if you want to make them, to make the motion and if you want to make a statement at that time. Thank you. So at this time, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve a consent agenda.
Moved by Trustee Nguyen. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Trustee Guzman. Any discussion on either of the two items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number one. Consider approval of Resolution Number 25-24/25 for School Board Recognition Month. Is there a motion to approve this item? Moved by Trustee Padilla. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Nguyen. Any discussion? I do have one comment. Thank you to staff for bringing this resolution to us. Oftentimes, we recognize so many other individuals or groups, but we don't always recognize the work that we do as trustees as well as the, you know, representatives from the other thousand school districts throughout California. So thank you for bringing this today. And at this time, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. At this time, all those in favor of approving item number one, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, item number one is approved. Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of Memorandum of Understanding or MOU between the El Monte Union Education Association, or EMUEA, and the El Monte Union High School District to address the severe impact of recent wildfires. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Trustee Padilla. Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Seconded by Trustee Guzman. Any discussion? Seeing none, the item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving item number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, item number two is approved. Item number three, consider approval of Memorandum of Understanding or MOU between the El Monte Union Education Association, or EMUEA, and the El Monte Union High School District to create an evaluation committee. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve.
I will give it to Trustee Galavies. Moved by Trustee Galavies. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Trustee Nguyen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item number three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, item number three is approved. That concludes our business of the day. We're moving on to roundtable and closure of meeting. Item number one, topic or issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. And I do want to share the statement. This is an opportunity for us to bring forward items that we would like to discuss or present at a future board meeting. It does require consensus for, from the board in order to bring an item forward. This is not an opportunity to ask questions or to engage in detailed discussions with staff. Thank you. Mr. Nguyen, do you have any items for roundtable? No. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Mr. Padilla.
Yes, I would like to get the report from Robin Torres. Miss Robin Torres, the last time that there was budget cuts, our district did a really good job of minimizing any layoffs, you know, based on funding and stuff like that. Can we have a copy of that report again for us all to see?
Sorry, which report was that again? Sorry.
This was the report, remember when Pasadena Unified School District like laid off like 220 people? And there were a lot of budget cuts and stuff. And we were one of the very few districts that only ended up like laying off two people and it was because they were not permanent positions. And there was a breakdown by Ms. Robin Torres of all of the positions that we were going to rehire because we had the funding and stuff. But then there were only two. And so we were very proud of that, that, you know, layoffs is an ugly word because it changes the lives of people. I'm referring to that report. I don't know if Ms. Torres knows what I'm talking about.
Yes, I do believe you are mentioning the one with the temporary employees and if we're bringing them back and if we're going to do any layoffs or any retirees that we did during our budget presentation.
It was a very extensive report that you, that you gave to us and you broke it all down for us.
Yes, we're working on staffing right now. By next week, I should be able to provide that in my Friday memo.
Yeah, but I'm not referring to like this cream here. I'm referring to the one that you did for us, that one.
Okay, yes, I can, I can send that.
Okay, so this, this was the previous one where it breaks down how many positions we were able to keep. And then I think it only identified the two positions where we had to...
Do you recall that one?
I, I know what you're talking about.
That one, that's what I'm referring to.
During the board study session?
Yes, we'll put it, we'll put it in your memo on Friday.
Yeah, if there's, if there's no objection from anybody, we'll put that in the Friday memo.
Okay.
Okay? Any other items?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Padilla. Trustee Galavies?
No items.
No items. Trustee Guzman?
Yes, two items. One, related to, to mental health resources and support that our parents and staff and students can access. Dr. Zuniga, so I don't know if that's something that you already have compiled with Laco and the Department of Mental Health for the county. But I think it would be important to see if you have something compiled and if not, if you can compile something for access or distribution, but also for us to see what, what's on there.
You'd like a summary of the resources we have in the district related to mental health?
Not a summary per se, but I mean, you know, with the, the stress going on of the wildfires, with the immigration raids, with everything going on, our parents or students, even our staff are stressed out. Their mental health issues are coming up. And so what do we have?
Are you asking for staff to send out something?
Well, I want, I want to see if the district already has put something together. And if you have, can you send that over?
Sure. We are working on it as we speak now. So this would be in response to what was my, my communication today with regards to respond to the new federal government policies. The wildfire communication went to our families prior to, prior to this week. So in the midst of all that happened within our community, we sent out communication throughout the times that we were dismissing students from, from school, obviously. And then along with any type of resources to communicate to our schools, to provide to those families. But we have not continued that since the actual fires are away from the area now. But we definitely have the resources that county has provided and are available to our staff. So we can resend like a recap of what we've done. Board response to the fire, it could be that the board wishes to do.
Yeah, because it's not just the fires that are stressing everybody out and, and causing anxiety and all kinds of issues or trauma. It's, I mean, it's ongoing. And so if you can, one, continue to put that together and send it out. But two, send us if you can.
Okay.
And then the other one related to, they brought it up today, the cell phone use in schools. An update on timeline, I'm hoping we can implement that by next school year. But with the timeline and updates that you have on that.
We'll do the timeline for you and provide it to the board.
Anything else? Thank you.
I just want to add something. Please, you know, regarding the invitation to the Vietnamese Buddhist Congregation Temple, you need, you have anybody going over there, you know, to present a certificate of recognition? So I need to respond to, you know, to the Abbott. present a certificate of recognition. So I need to respond to, you know, to the abbot of the temple.
Thank you. Actually, that was one of the items I was going to bring up. So I'll respond to that now. So I was looking at my calendar, colleagues, the invitation is for Wednesday, January twenty ninth, which is a week from today.
That's the first day of Lunar New Year.
Do you know, do they have a program or is it just?
Yeah, they they do have a program and I will forward it.
Do you know what time exactly?
They start at eleven. Yeah, they they had a whole program, but you know, but very much the the abbot, we just want to have a lunch with all the board member that he told me that, you know, it's a good vegetarian lunch and going to prepare properly to welcome the, you know, all the elective official official in Almani. And this temple is located between South Almani High School and Mountview High School. And there's a lot of student, you know, go over there during some, doing up on Sunday to study and, you know, and it's a good partner for for school district.
So I'm looking at my calendar, and I do have a commitment at ten forty-five that morning with my father. He has a doctor's appointment, so I wouldn't be able to attend right at eleven. That's why I'm asking if there's a program, what time I would start.
I would actually the program, yeah.
If you like, I can call and inquire about it. Was there a program?
Yes, yes, please, yeah.
And provide it to the board tomorrow.
I may or may not be able to attend. And if I do, I mean, or may not be able to attend when the program takes place. However, I'm okay allowing or having another member present certificates and, you know, represent the district. Mr. Nguyen, are you planning on attending?
Yeah, I plan to attend.
Okay. So is anyone else available to attend on the twenty ninth? You work, you're not available?
I'm at work.
Not available?
I'm available, but the letter does say, please let us know if there are any special accommodations you or your team might need. I need some meat. I don't know about the vegetables, okay? So can you please forward that to them, Dr. Zuniga?
The doctors are going to confirm.
I will go.
When they have a program?
Vegetable doesn't do it.
And if if I'm available to attend, I'll attend and represent and present. Otherwise, I'm I'm okay having trustee Nguyen and trustee Padilla there to represent and present on behalf of the board.
Sure, and in dietary needs.
Yeah, and you know, the only reason I say that that I'm able to go, I always say that I'm at work. I believe that January twenty ninth is one of those days where I think we're off in the Almani City School District, those special days that we have, if I'm not mistaken. So if it is one of those days, like, I will go. But I'll check. I don't know why I didn't bring my calendar.
I think the Almani City align with us.
I think our day is Wednesday.
Twenty-nine.
Is the professional development day for there is a workday for all staff. Students are off, I believe. I'm not sure about the elementary school district.
It just occurred to me that it's it's the twenty ninth.
Yeah, I don't know. What day is it? A week, right?
The January? Okay.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
I don't think, I don't think.
Okay, I was looking at the right day.
I was thinking that was a Friday because I think the days we have are Fridays.
Yeah, you guys are Fridays.
Sorry, buddy, you're on your own. I'm working.
So so trustee Nguyen?
Forget about.
We'll coordinate with Dr. Zuniga, but more more likely than not, I think it may just be you. So well, once we confirm, I'll have Dr. Zuniga let you know.
Okay.
Okay, the other item that I other items that I have, sorry, really quick.
You want to?
Yeah, yeah, go. Yes.
We have. That's tomorrow. That's the so let me get to that item. So as I mentioned during communication, tomorrow at four o'clock, there's a Zoom meeting. It's an invitation from Laxta to meet with Senator Lena Gonzalez and CDE staff. I received the invitation, but they also let me know to ask the rest of the board if you would like to attend so that I can get you the registration link to attend.
Well, you're on that topic. I don't want to take a moment. It'll leave me. Connect with Dr. Guzman said about like what resource? So we're not like reinventing the wheel. If they already have some mental health resources, like share them with us.
Well, this is this is it's not a general discussion. It's a discussion specifically on Senate Bill forty-eight, which is a proposed to California Safe Schools Act, which would prohibit state law enforcement from working with federal immigration authorities. And it would prohibit immigration, the federal immigration authorities from entering school grounds without a judicial warrant, specific to that topic. It's not a general discussion.
So so just to go to that, bring back, bring us back a sample of what it the document needs to look at. You know, I'm talking about.
I've already provided that to Dr. Zuniga.
Perfect. You know, the seal with the, and our community needs to know that because when they're knocking on your door, you're all startled. And it's like, you know, slip it under the door so we could see it. So our community knows, like, if it doesn't have that seal from the judge, like, you don't need to open your door.
Right. So I'll I'll bring back information on that. But if anybody else is interested in attending the Zoom meeting, please let me know. And I will get you. Sorry, let me write that down. This pen stopped working. Thank you. I got one. Anybody else? It's at four o'clock tomorrow on Zoom. No? Okay. And then we do have Mountview High School's open house tomorrow, or back, yeah, open house at six o'clock. So if we are, we should have time. Yes, I will bring back information. The other item that I have is, we've already discussed the Trump administration and their immigration, the impacts that that'll have. Dr. Zuniga, I know I shared that document with you earlier, the one that trustee Padilla just referenced. If please ensure that that gets to the school sites if we need to provide a a training for school site administrators or reception staff.
Secretaries.
To make it clear what protocol is, based on the information that was released today, the DOJ indicating that they have rescinded the sensitive locations directive and essentially allowing immigration authorities to enter schools, hospitals, churches, et cetera. And then my question, well, the last item, my question is to my colleagues. So we do have a new board. Anytime there is at least one change on the board, it's an entirely new board, and we have two new members. So I'd like to set aside some time for a governance study session so we can go over our board policies, our board bylaws, and also update our protocols and our norms, so that we can get everybody on the same page on how we expect to to operate as a board. And additionally, to set up time through that governance study session on development of a governance handbook, so that it is clear what it is that we do and how we how we do it.
Did we ever get, did we ever get that handbook done? Do we have?
We never gave direction to make one.
Okay.
We just updated our bylaws, but I think this time it's it's probably a good idea for us to develop something and put it in writing so that it's clear.
And get some samples from neighboring school districts. Ms. Publey, you want to say something? What's that?
I don't think your mic's working.
Hello?
Oh.
Oh, okay. This is just related to like you guys talking about a handbook. I think in there would, in that handbook, it would be really nice to have a student section because I know that when when I came into the role, I I met up with Sophia like during the summer. I got in contact with Ruben just to make sure like I knew what I was doing.
That's a good one.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Publey.
I know you, I know, Board Member Breones, I know that you also are part of the CSBA, the delegate, you know.
Delegate Assembly.
Can you get copies of samples from other school districts like so that we can not start from scratch? You know what I mean? And it helps to get that.
Yeah, we've been working on having a discussion and just what are the unique things about each of each of them for each district, it pertains to their board bylaws, specifically to, you know, resolving how we would address those bylaws.
Got it.
But the format and template are very similar, but a good job with how they structure it.
Yeah.
Deal.
So so right now, my question is on dates for a governance study session so that we can all be on the same page. I'd like to have it before, I don't know that we could have it before next meeting. Our next meeting is on the fifth. So let's, anytime in in February after the the fifth, before our next meeting on the nineteenth, unless the nineteenth meeting, if there's, if it's a short agenda, we could perhaps start earlier and have it on the same night. Otherwise, if there's another date that folks are available.
The nineteenth is a special board meeting?
Yes. Okay, so if we need to start at five or later, how about if we go back a week on the twelfth? Is there any, is there anybody who is not available on the twelfth?
I'm okay.
You're okay? Dr. Zuniga, do you have anything that would preclude you from?
No, that day, that day should work.
Trustee Galvez?
I'm good on the twelfth.
Mr. Padilla?
I guess I'm good on the twelfth. I I forgot my calendar. That's twice. I don't know why. So I mean, if the majority, if it works for the majority, then.
Okay. So are we okay with five or do we want to move it up to six?
I think five o'clock would work. I think also inviting our legal counsel to provide support with that. So there's specific guidance and.
We can ensure that that.
I'll talk to Terrence, make sure that somebody's somebody's available for that as well.
Yeah. And make sure that it's on his calendar or one of their calendars?
Yes.
Okay.
The twelfth, correct?
Yeah, the twelfth at.
Five P M.
Five P M.
Board Member Breones?
Go ahead.
On the homeless count, clarify that for me. That that thing is frustrating to me just because just I, does that give us more funding? And then where does the funding go? And then it's just, that one just infuriates me, you know? And I and I say that because I remember we passed that, you know, LA County, you know, we we put, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars into that. And I just feel like when we did that, the fricking problem got worse. So what does that do for our county? Like, gives us more money if we increase the count or what? I know you're involved with that. I'm not. So what does it do for us?
The homeless count is mandated through the department, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's each, what's called each continuum of care, which here in Los Angeles County, with the exception of Pasadena, Glendale, and Long Beach, there's a joint powers authority called the Los Angeles Home Services Authority. It's a JPA between the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. They operate the continuum of care. So HUD requires each COC to perform a yearly point in time count to identify how many individuals are unhoused within each, what's called a service provider area, or in SPA three here in the San Gabriel Valley. So what that does is it's supposed to provide an idea of how many folks are unhoused. And the idea is that then HUD and other government departments would provide resources, in most cases, funding through vouchers or.
To who?
To to that that the operator of the continuum, the continuum of care, which in this case is LASSA. So they would provide funding to them here in LA County. LASSA in turn then contracts out with a lot of nonprofits, PATH being one of them, Union Station, who we've had their, at the time, executive director, Ann Minsky come and speak to us about the hotels that were purchased by the city. Other organizations receive funding who then they provide the necessary services, whether it's housing or mental health support, you know, motel vouchers for short, short term care. They are the ones who provide those services. So the federal government provides funding and other resources to the operators of the COC, in this case, it's LASSA in LA County. But you have to do a yearly point in time count. We've seen the last year, the numbers dipped in the city of Los Angeles and in most, most cities in LA County. Some areas experienced an increase while others experienced a significant drop off.
So wherever that person is, you count it to that SPA?
To that SPA, in that particular area.
That particular.
And and what happens is, just for those of you who haven't participated, I've been doing this for quite some time now, each area has a location where you go and you register and you show up and you can either do training ahead of time or do it that evening. So in this case, here in El Monte, it's traditionally been held at the Jack Crippen Senior Center. In South Almani, it's at their senior center. Rosemead, it's in one of the community centers. And then once everyone is organized and has gone through the training, then you're sent out to a specific area. Usually, there's either a physical map or an app. And then you go and you either drive around or you're walking around depending on the area. And you're counting how many folks you see who are unhoused, if they're physically out on the street, in a tent, if they are perhaps unhoused in a car or an RV. In some sensitive areas, like say, under underpasses or in the river area, the sheriff's homeless outreach team will go out and do the count there so that folks aren't in, you know, in a dangerous situation, you know, rocks or water coming by. So ideally, you're going out and just counting, you know, how many people you see. And then all that data is is correlated at the end of the count. And then usually, I believe in June or July, it is released and we get an idea. This year, every year, it's supposed to be in January, but because of the fires, it was postponed until February. So.
So the city of Almani doesn't directly get the funding. Eventually, it goes down to LASSA or LASSA.
Cities can apply for funding.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, like the hotels or the motels that were purchased, the the budget in and the motel, that was money that was provided during the pandemic through the project Home Key.
I remember that.
And again, you know, it's based on the numbers that we provide. If you have a significant number of unhoused individuals, then there's a need for resources like housing. So then the funding comes down. It's it is a complicated and kind of cumbersome process.
Yeah, because once the funding's over, their butts back, you can only pay for the motel vouchers so much. And then when that money's over, then they're back in the streets.
Right. And that's a little bit beyond the scope of the count. We just want to get volunteers that are able to go out and count how many folks they see.
So bottom line, it's it's to determine how much funding each SPA is going to get?
No, it's to determine how many how many people are unhoused in a particular area.
Right. But based on that count of how many people are unhoused in that specific area, that's how they determine some funding that trickles down.
Ideally, ideally, yes.
All right.
The idea, though, is we we need volunteers.
I know.
So, no, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Those are my items. I don't think I have anything else. Okay, moving on to closed session. The board will not be reconvening into closed session since we don't have legal counsel tonight. Dr. Zuniga, would you like to report out on closed session?
Sure. In response to closed session this evening, for item A, information was provided, no action taken. Item B, information was provided, no action taken. And C, information was provided, no action taken by the board.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Moving on to adjournment of meeting. If there's no objection from the board tonight, I move that we adjourn our meeting in memory of Eric D. Lopez. Mr. Lopez was raised in the city of El Monte and graduated from Almani High School. He earned his bachelor's degree from UC Santa Cruz and completed his administrative degree at National University. His career began here in the Almani Union High School District as a social studies teacher, then as a director of student activities. He joined Balden Park Unified School District in two thousand and six as an assistant principal at Sierra Vista High School, and later served as principal at Jones and Olive Middle Schools before serving as principal of Balden Park High School for the last three years. Mr. Lopez is remembered as an influential leader who had a caring and compassionate personality. His calm demeanor always provided assurance and stability. He was dedicated to his family, his colleagues, and his friends, always willing to provide support. He was an integral part of the Balden Park Unified School District and built a great rapport with the community. I had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Lopez when he was director of student activities at Mountview High School. And just a year ago, I had the pleasure of running into him at Balden Park High School when I participated in the Golden Bell validation process for one of their submissions, of which they received a golden bell. There is a memorial planned for this Friday, January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. at Balden Park High School. If there's no objection, I ask that we adjourn this meeting tonight in memory of Eric D. Lopez. Without objection, it is nine seventeen P M.
Mr. Breones, really quick, since he had such a strong connection with us and was one of our teachers here, would anybody object to us sending like a floral arrangement or something to the family in honor of or on our behalf as the Almonte Union High School District? I know that Dr. Zuniga knew him. I know that Mr. Cuevas from El Monte High School knew him. I know that when I got the communication, I I reached out and I sent the text to Dr. Zuniga and Mr. Eric Cuevas. And Mr. Eric Cuevas shared, you know, yeah, when our schools played each other in football, you know, just recently, we exchanged, we talked to each other. And so I know we don't usually do that, but this is not, this is just a little different. It's kind of like our brotherhood of educators and education. It's our neighbor. Would you be open to something like that?
I'm okay with that. Dr. Zuniga, is that something that we would be able to do?
Yeah, we will look to see. I spoke to the superintendent from Balden Park today at our budget workshop, and he had asked regarding, you know, the district's response. And I provided that information. We did a memorial on Monday. I also said, we would like to provide some type of maybe message or card or obviously a plant to the family. Do you have a contact that you can provide? And he was going to give me that. So I'll make sure that I can get in touch with him and see if there's a specific address we can send it to.
Yeah, I'm I'm.
Excellent. And and I just want to acknowledge also newly elected board member, Mr. Ricardo Vasquez. You know, he was telling me, he's like, he used to work in your district. And I replied back, yes, like he knew that. And then he also sent me a flyer for the memorial and stuff that I can share with Dr. Zuniga to share with anybody else. I could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board President.
So no objection?
No objection.
No objection.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. So at this time, without objection, we are adjourned at nine nineteen P M. Have a good night, everybody.